Good evening. Let's try that again. Good evening. I bring to order this meeting in the Westboro Select Board, being Tuesday, November 28th at 6:00 PM. This meeting is being livestreamed and recorded by Westboro TV. If you are able, please join us in rising for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We start each meeting with open forum. Do you have anyone here for open forum? Jen, please come forward. Well, Jen, and then how about you?
Hi, my name is Jen Kirkland. I am the Recreation Director here. I just wanted to come before you tonight as we move through the process of designing the dog park. I just wanted to let you know and the public know that we will be holding a public information and input session on Tuesday, December 12th at 6:00 PM in this room. Well, there's information, an informational flyer on our website, the town's website. We'll be sending out an email blast as well. Just wanted to make everyone aware. Thank you.
Thank you.
So I've, uh...
What part? Name and address?
Oh, Boyd Conklin, 8 Water Street.
Thank you.
So I've sent you guys some information on articles for the warrant, some that I'm proposing, also to Christie and John for the process through Westboro Legal and this kind of thing. Wanted to go over it again. One of them, one was the country club, where you guys are moving forward with the tear down and replace. So in my opinion, the electrification and the ADA driving your project, along with the balloon wall retro, none of these need doing. A third of the, uh, the assessed building value can be spent in three years without triggering the ADA requirements. So I'm looking at a article on the warrant to not tear down the country club with your, the way you guys are going about doing it with your committees and this kind of thing. So let the citizens of Westboro decide on the country club in that way. Also, for the senior center, that it should remain in the same location. You bought the building on Union Street, but perhaps the town citizens can decide on whether they want the senior center to be moved over there as another article. Also, um, an article to relieve the Westboro government boards and commissions from their rubber stamping of the global federal and state mandates. The citizens of Westboro and have, and give that back to the citizens of Westboro. Make their own decisions on non-essential business closings, indoor dining, masking, social distancing, and remote learning. Also, um, perhaps another one on the illegal alien housing. Perhaps we can work on an article to remove Westboro from the right to shelter homeless families, general laws, part one, title two, chapter 23B, section 30. Needy families and children and pregnant women. Mayor Eric Adams is currently getting thrown under the bus for no, from, he used to say, no hate, no fear, illegals, my word, welcome here. And now he's singing illegals, but once again, my word, will destroy New York City. As of course, further rubber stamping by you will destroy Westboro. Thank you.
Anyone else here for open forum? Please come forward.
Good evening. Del Richmond, nine John Pratt Circle. This is stretch of Route 30 that runs from McDonald's to Yelman Farms, basically. And this one mile or so stretch of road is starting to become dangerous. There's a lot of pedestrian and bicycle traffic on that stretch of road, and there is very little room between the line that designates the edge of the roadway and the embankments on both sides of that road, pretty much the entire length. And some of it is very steep. A lot of the people who are walking along this route are families with kids, some of them very young. And I'm very concerned that at some point, somebody's just gonna make a misstep and wind up in front of somebody's car. And in many cases, the people who are driving along that stretch of road are not especially keen at paying attention to the speed limit. So I would like to just put that out there for your consideration, that at some point, we need to take a serious look at adding a sidewalk to that stretch of road. Thank you.
Anyone else here for open forum? No, thank you. We get to item number two on our agenda today, the Veteran of the Year Award, Paul E. Freeman Jr., from the Veterans Advisory Board.
Thank you, Sean. Thank you for having us this evening. I'm gonna ask Ken Farrar, the retired Veterans Service Agent, to come forward and say a few words, and then we've got some presentations for Paul. This seems to wanna spit at people. Sorry. So, Ken?
Hi, Ken Farrar, nine Deerfield Way. I met Paul about in 2006 when I joined the Veterans Advisory Board. And we had Pete Fay and Charlie Naples and George Miller and Charles Hunstrom and George Perry and you and me, where the survivors.
Yes, we are.
We dragged the chairs out of the hallway over at the Forbes Building and squeezed them in the old principal's office and had our meetings on Tuesday mornings at 10 discussing what we were, what we were doing for the veterans in town and what plans and items we had organized. That's when I first learned about your involvement with the memorials in town and how you were involved with the Gulf War and the cemetery and even about the new cemetery that we got involved with now, so we tried to get done before John Walden and I retired. You kept, it was a top of mind. You were always active getting veterans' rights, even as far as the VA sometimes, if it required it. And we're always, as we got into more programs, you were the first to volunteer to stay and man the booth at the blood drive, the clothing drives, and the items that we sent over to the veterans. You jumped to the front of the line to get involved in all those areas. And when we transitioned over the flag placement to the National Honor Society, Paul adopted the St. Luke Cemetery and made sure that the kids were well provided for with bug spray and tick, tick spray and everything that was necessary to get the job done safely. But then again, he showed up an hour before the kids had had the flags placed, before they even got there. There's no one that I can think of that's more deserving. This award was designed to recognize people that had served the country and the community. And I think Paul qualifies tremendously in that area. Paul, it's a pleasure to know you. Thank you for your service and God bless.
Thank you, Ken. Thank you very kindly. I'd now like to ask Representative, oh, I'm sorry, Hannah Kane and, no, little block there, I'm sorry.
That's okay. Ron served quite as long as Rep. Kane has.
I knew it caught me by surprise.
So, thank you.
And following that, Senator Moore, come up. So we'll pull.
This microphone? So, do you want to go first?
Go, you start.
Sure. Well, I just, I appreciated Ken's remarks, blast from the past, Charlie Naples, and some of the others. And I was very impressed to read about all your service. Twenty-five years on the Veterans Advisory Board is wonderful for the town. That's so much work. And the multi, I'm trying to remember the right thing, the multicultural council, very much appreciated as well. And appreciate your longtime residency here. It's residents like you that have made the town so strong. So, do you want to say a few words and then I'll read the citation?
Sure. I just want to thank you, sir, for your service to our country.
Thank you for saying something.
And to our Commonwealth and to this wonderful town of Westboro. You've made such an indelible mark on all three, and we're so appreciative of everything you've done. And we're so happy to be here today to honor you and your service.
Well, thank you for being here.
Of course. Thank you.
And now I'll read the citation. "The Commonwealth of Massachusetts, the House of Representatives, be it hereby known to all that the Massachusetts House of Representatives offers its sincerest congratulations to Paul Freeman in recognition of being recognized as the Westboro's Veteran of the Year for 2023 and for your years of service to the Westboro community and the nation. The entire membership extends its very best wishes and expresses the hope for future good fortune and continued success in all endeavors." And it's signed by Rep. Kane, Speaker of the House, Ron Mariano, and me as the State Representative for your part of Westboro. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, Kate, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Can we take a picture?
Sure.
And we can, we can wait till the senators have.
Senator Moore?
No, for yours.
And I'm sorry, I forgot Kate Donahue's name.
Don't worry.
Good, how are you?
Very good, thank you.
Well, thank you. Thank you for many reasons. Thank you for your sacrifices you made on behalf of everyone in the country and the sacrifices your family made. Everything that we, we owe everything to you and other veterans who have gone out and, have you heard me okay? Who have gone out and made those sacrifices for you. And obviously the fact that you haven't forgotten, that since you've been back, you've continued to sacrifice for your community and everyone. And I think just the recognition tonight, and everyone here acknowledges how much they appreciate everything that you have done and what you've done in your life for the community and for the people here. So I have a recognition of that. I have a citation from the State Senate. "Be it known that the Massachusetts Senate hereby extends its congratulations to Paul E. Freeman Jr., Chief Warrant Officer, United States Navy, retired, in recognition of being named the town of Westboro's Veteran of the Year for your dedicated, for your dedication to helping your fellow veterans. And be it further known to Massachusetts Senate, extends its best wishes for continued success." That this citation be duly signed by the President of the Senate and attested and the copy thereof transmitted to the clerk, signed by myself, Senator Moore, but signed by the Senate President. And again, thank you for all the sacrifices and commitment you have made to the people of Westboro. But thank you.
Good, how are you doing? 2023 Veteran of the Year, Paul Freeman. In grateful recognition of your many years of service to support and care of the veteran community in Westboro, your deep devotion, dedication, and advocacy has provided guidance and assistance in countless ways to veterans throughout the town. Your service as Veterans Agent, active participation in the advisory board, and your volunteer hours on many projects has been key to a number of initiatives that have improved the lives of a great number of our fellow veterans. We deeply recognize and proudly salute your lifelong commitment to veteran issues and your ongoing contributions to the veterans in Westboro. Thank you for your service and dedication. Thank you, too.
This is gonna be the best part about meeting.
If you would like to do me a favor, please. Behind you is my family and friends. That's my friend Tom, who's white boy that came over from Syracuse.
You wanna get another photo?
Wanna get a photo with them?
No, that's okay.
Okay.
Can I have a few minutes, please?
Yeah, thank you.
Gotta put my glasses on so I can read my fellowship. It's nice getting young. First of all, I'd like to take, thank Senator Moore and State Representative Hannah and Kane for their presence and giving me the certificates. I really appreciate that. I also want to thank the Board, the Chairman, and the members for allowing me to be here to receive this prestigious award. I want to also thank the Veterans Advisory Board, the Chairman and their members for being here and putting my name in their hat and taking my name out of the hat and giving me this prestigious award. I want to reach out and say thank you to my family and friends that are watching on cable TV right now, and I appreciate them taking the time to do that. I also want to thank my family and friends, as you can see that behind me, for taking time to come up here and being here for this prestigious award again. I just want to let everybody know, I'm very humbled and very honored to receive this. And all else I can say is that, thank you. Thank you very kindly.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have item number three on the agenda, the naming of the athletic fields located at the former Westboro State Hospital.
Hi, Jen Kirkland, Recreation Director. So I'm just here before you tonight. We had a resident come to our Board, Bill Lanain, interested in renaming the state hospital fields after someone that has taken care of them and just done so much work to make the fields and that whole area what it is today. So he came before our commission, and our commission voted four to zero in support of renaming the state hospital fields, the Earl Story Fields. Like I said, Earl's been celebrated a lot recently with his recent retirement, but it is very well deserved. He has taken care of that property like it's his own backyard. The pride that he took in taking care of everything from the fields, from the water's edge, everything. It just, this resident, Bill Lanain, he is here, wanted to find a way to recognize all of his efforts. And so for what it's worth, I'm in full support of it. Our commission voted four to zero, and this is the final. views, or the enjoyment of youth, elderly, of all diversities in our whole community. Earl had a vision that we all enjoy the fruits of today. Earl not only supervised the work, but he did both manual labor as well as operating various types of equipment, including developing the initial home-developed irrigation system, which for two seasons, he would be there at three and four o'clock in the morning to make sure that the fields were right. Amen. Please name the field for Earl. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Better, you're in real trouble, Bill. I'm not sure which.
That's why I moved the other side.
Before I request a motion, any, any thoughts? I think actually Ian and I gave thoughts to him the other day.
No, I think, I just appreciate this coming forward through the Rec Department, echoing everything that Jen and Bill said. I mean, this has been something that's day one, that Earl has put his time, his heart, his love into that, that property and making it really a showpiece for the community. I can't think of a better way to recognize all that he put into it by putting his name on it. So I just fully support it, and it's a, something that I know he probably doesn't want and doesn't want to hear this, but he deserves it many times over. So fully in support of it, hopefully the Board is too, but Jen, thank you for bringing it forward, and of course, thank you, Earl, for everything that you have, have done.
Do you want to say something?
I'll just make a short comment. I certainly appreciate all the hard work you've given to the community over the years to maintain and create such fields. Certainly, my family, my children, myself, having used those fields over the year, really, over the years, really enjoyed them, and they're beautiful as a result of your hard work and labor. So thank you very much. I'm fully supportive of this.
Yeah, so I want to thank the resident, Mr. Lanain, who brought it forward. I'm not sure if you're in trouble for doing this with Mr. Story, or if you'll be thanked in the end, I think it will be the latter. But I do think, do appreciate you bringing it forward, appreciate the Recreation Commission for taking it up. Their vote of four zero is not surprising. I also am in support, Earl, you've done an amazing job over there in significant ways and all the ways that Jen mentioned and that Bill mentioned, but in little ways of kind of saying, hey, you know, what do you think about? Or we need to do this, or if there's an event there, and just all, all the details. And so thank you for that. You are so deserving of this, and it will be fun to see your name on, on a plaque or maybe mowed into the field or something like that, so fully supportive. Who's making that motion?
I, I will just, I agree, it's easy when you have kids and you're out there early on a Saturday or Sunday morning, when it's chilly out, of course, the kids are running around, they don't notice, but you're on the sidelines watching the soccer games. Whereas my children got older and played Little League, baseball and softball, and were using the fields, and Greg's field in particular, many years playing there, it's easy to think, wow, this is great, and take it for granted, and not realize the amount of planning and work and care it takes, not only to create a great space, but to maintain it and improve it and continue to think about how it can best serve the community over the years. And Earl, you brought that, you brought that passion to your, your role, not only within the DPW and working with the fields and the Rec Department, but as a resident and a member of our community. And for that, I thank you, and it's very much appreciated. So I move to name the portion of property containing recreational athletic fields at the former site of the Westboro State Hospital, Earl Story Park.
I'll second.
I'll third.
All those in favor? Mr. Story.
Let it be said.
Thank you very much.
Earl Story, two fifty-eight East Main Street. I, I just got to say to my dear friend, Bill Lanain, him and his wife, there's nobody that's done more in this town, him and his wife with the garden club and all the committees Bill's been on over the years and things like that. It'd be hard to beat out him. I mean, you know, maybe manual labor as far as making a field and stuff like that, but Bill has been on so many accomplishments in this town, and I, I can't tell you how great it is to have my friend and his wife Beverly is just the, the best. So thank you, Bill, thank you. I'd just like to say that I'm blown away by this, really, really blown away by this. This, this property, you know, a long time ago, Frank DeZiata and I, do we have him in it?
Yep.
Frank DeZiata.
As many as you'd like.
Frank DeZiata and I got together with the Chief Operating Ops over to State Hospital. His name was Steve Shibel, great guy. He had a, he had a road race he used to run around there, and he wanted to fix, fix the road over there. And I was just new to, just came to work here, you know? And he had wanted to invite the town over to use the property more, you know? So one thing led to another. We fixed the road for him. John Arnold worked with us, and John Arnold ran the town's road greater. We fixed the road all up so he could have his road race every fall, you know? So one thing led to another, and we talked about, he said, I said, gee, it'd be a nice place to make some soccer fields over here or something like that. And he said, and that's when the Glavine Center in Shrewsbury had just built their fields up there, and it was on state land, and they ended up getting a five-year lease. So we only got a, we first was going to get a three-year lease, but then they had a two or one-year lease. But anyways, that's kind of how it started, and then we built the fields over there, and we got some money from the town. I think we got fifty thousand dollars on article, and the Rec Department, Frank, put a ton of money into it, and we built those fields over. And basically, John Arnold and myself built those fields over there. John worked maybe three, four days a week because he was retired, and, and I worked Saturdays and Sundays over there, and we rented a bulldozer for Jim Harvey. He was good enough to give us a bulldozer, and we rented that from him for ten thousand a month, and I ran that seven days a week over there. And it was, it was just a labor of love. I mean, you know, it was like you went on vacation over there, the land is so beautiful, you know, and, and it's...
Only your kind of vacation. The bulldozers are in the dirt.
Sounds great.
It's just a great honor to, for you to, to do this for me. I mean, I, I would never think of this in my wildest dreams, but again, and I thank Jen and, and the committee for everything they do, and she's, she's awesome to work with. I told her I'm not going anywhere. I told her I need to be involved, and I, you know, I, I'm already bored, so anyways, thanks again very much. Thank you.
Thank you. Wow, John has a tough act to follow.
Okay, so we need to open the public hearing?
I'll move to open the public hearing for the fiscal year 2024 tax classification.
Second. All those in favor? Five to zero.
John Steinberg, Chief Assessor. Thanks for having me tonight. I want to start the tax classification by saying that every time I do this, there's something before me that brings in a large crowd, and then everybody leaves. So it's a little bit, starting to get a little bit of a complex. I'll begin by thanking Christine Kim for all their support, as well as Leah, who is probably watching this at home, because I know she can't get enough of this, for all the work that she did over time. I want to recognize Jason Little, who is in the crowd tonight, for his, his courage in coming in and taking over. I'll also recognize my staff, Liz Scher, our Administrative Assistant, Julie Brownlee, my Assistant Assessor. We have a new field listener, Sandy Jenna, and my Board members, Joe McDonough and Mark Silverberg, for their longtime support within our office. And with that, I will just mention that people often ask me how I do what I do. That's it, right? This is how, this is how we do things in Westboro in the Assessor's Office. This is the only picture you are getting tonight, you know? But bringing us to the purpose of the hearing tonight, we're going to have three votes tonight. We'll review a little bit about what's been going on in the town. The first will be to vote to maintain the single tax rate or shift a portion of the tax levy from the residential class to commercial, industrial, and personal property. We will vote whether or not to adopt a residential exemption or whether to adopt a small commercial exemption. But first, we'll begin with a recap of where we stand this year with our values and our spending. Fiscal year at a glance, we begin with last year's levy limit of one hundred and two million, eight hundred and sixty thousand, nine hundred and six dollars. We add to that two and a half percent in our new growth for the year. Our new growth was down from last year by four hundred and three thousand, but still a very impressive number. That gives us our fiscal 2024 levy limit of one hundred and eight million dollars. You add to that the four hundred and twenty-seven thousand, eight hundred and thirteen dollar debt exclusion, which gives us a maximum allowable levy for this year of one hundred and nine million, one hundred and twenty-six thousand, four hundred and fifty-one dollars. Eventually, I will get to more rounding, I promise. The actual fiscal levy for 2024 is ninety-four million, four hundred and thirteen thousand, eight hundred and fifty-four dollars, which leaves us with an excess levy capacity of fourteen million, seven hundred and twelve thousand, five hundred and ninety-six dollars and fifty-three cents. I emphasize that number, that's an important number, that's tax dollars that you could have raised over time that have not been raised. And that's up one point three five percent over last year. Our levy has increased by six point one six percent, and you'll see down below, our property value as a town has increased by eight point eight nine percent, and how that breaks out with our residential property increasing in value by nine percent, and that does include growth. Commercial property by four point three percent, and industrial by four point five eight, which also includes some significant growth. Personal property at twenty-two point nine percent, also substantial growth within our personal property. Our average single family is increasing eight point three eight percent, from six fifty-six seven thirty-eight to seven hundred and eleven thousand, seven hundred and forty dollars, which drives the average single-family tax bill increase to up six hundred and twenty-one dollars or five point six one percent. Commercial properties are increasing a little less, three point three six percent, and their tax bills, because of the drop in rate, will be going up only point seven two percent. And industrial average property went up three point nine three percent, and their tax bills are going up three point two two percent or two thousand fifty-seven dollars. As a value by class, if you recall, last year was the first year that Westboro fell below the thirty percent non-residential value. That trend has continued by point one percent this year. So it went from, it went to seventy point four six percent of the value and of the levy for this year, that's up from seventy point three six percent. And you can see in the pie chart how that breaks out between residential, commercial, industrial, and personal property. And you can see the change in total value as a percent, where commercial and industrial are down, but you have that significant increase in personal property. And here you can see the trend that has continued over time as residential value continues to increase. Bear in mind, a lot of that is also driven by growth as we build out the town, whether it be Westboro Village or the condos over at the State Hospital, the houses over at Silver Hollow, all that also continues to contribute to the percent of residential property. It's not just increased in values. Our new growth, you can see from this chart the substantial amount of personal property growth. This has been a big conversation over time because a big portion of that excess levy capacity comes from that personal property growth. We benefit every year from substantial growth within personal property. But you can also see this year there was pretty sizable residential growth, similar to last year, and industrial growth, not as big as last year, but still contributing. And the, and the primary sources of those, personal property growth from Amazon Global Life Sciences, which was a former GE Healthcare company, and Marvell Semiconductors, which is new to town, and real estate growth, Amazon Distribution Center, which I believe has now received their final certificate of occupancy, is now operating up on Otis Street, Chauncey Lake condominiums at the State Hospital, and Silver Hollow Estates that continues to move along with their twenty-six houses. So let's break down the growth in excess levy capacity and what that means. If we were to pretend that we did not have any excess levy capacity and we just went off the 2023 actual levy, and we added our two and a half percent to a ninety-one million, one hundred and fifty-nine thousand before new growth, if we just took our real estate growth without personal property, we'd be at ninety-two million, five hundred and sixty-eight thousand, five hundred and forty. Our actual levy is ninety-four million, four hundred and thirteen thousand, which is a six point one six percent increase, or five million, four hundred thousand. That's one point nine five percent over what we would have been allowed within Proposition Two and a Half. But we do have personal property growth, which gives us a total growth number of three point two six million, and so our Proposition Two and a Half levy limit becomes ninety-four four twenty-five, four twenty. And so with that, in a levy of ninety-four four thirteen, we are just shy of our two and a half levy limit, okay? And then you would add to that the debt exclusion, okay, which gives us our excess levy capacity. Here you can see the history of our levy as it has increased. Our levy this year at ninety-four point four million dollars. Twenty thirteen, just ten years ago, it was sixty-two million, sixty-two point three million. And here's your average single-family tax bill, eleven thousand, six hundred and eighty These are some of the neighboring communities and what's going on there. We have a few that are not done with their classification hearings, so we don't have average single-family increases for them, but you could see in some of the neighboring communities that still have sizable increases. Milford at five point six percent, Shrewsbury at six percent, and if we... If we just took our real estate growth without personal property, we'd be at ninety two million, five hundred and sixty eight thousand, five hundred and forty. Our actual levy is ninety four million, four hundred and thirteen thousand, which is a six point one six percent increase or five million, four hundred thousand. That's one point nine five percent over what we would have been allowed within Proposition Two and a Half. But we do have personal property growth, which gives us a total growth number of three point two six million. And so our Proposition Two and a Half levy limit becomes ninety four, four twenty five, four twenty. And so with that, in a levy of ninety four, four thirteen, we are just shy of our Two and a Half levy limit. Okay? And then you would add to that the debt exclusion, okay, which gives us our excess levy capacity. Here you can see the history of our levy as it has increased. Our levy this year at ninety four point four million dollars. Twenty thirteen, just ten years ago, it was sixty two million, sixty two point three million. And here's your average single family tax bill, eleven thousand, six hundred and eighty dollars. These are some of the neighboring communities and what's going on there. We have a few that are not done with their classification hearings. So we don't have average single family increases for them. But you could see in some of the neighboring communities that still have sizable increases, Milford at five point six percent, Shrewsbury at six percent, and if we recall, Shrewsbury had a substantial override a few years ago. South were at four point eight percent and us at five point six percent. Quick look at our top taxpayers, Amazon leading the way. We talked for a while about when we'll start to see some of the returns on Amazon. Amazon's going to contribute three point two million dollars to our taxes this year. Caruth Capital in second at two million dollars. And then you can see the sizable amount of residential apartments that fall within these top taxpayers. Our residential apartment revenue from property value is very strong in this town. And then wrapping up, you see, uh, are you, some of your, our utilities and Astellas Pharmaceuticals that continues to be a substantial contributor in personal property. As well as each year as their TIF rolls down, that contributes to both growth and added value on the property. So let's have a little refresher course going back a few years to how we broke down what it means to split the levy. In a hypothetical world, in our fantasy land, if we had a hundred million dollar total value in the town and a million dollar tax levy and a similar seventy, thirty percent split, right? And we looked at the same value property, five hundred thousand dollars for both commercial and single family. With a single rate, they would each pay the same amount of tax bill. If we shifted ten percent, okay? The levy amount of the commercial industrial goes up by ten percent, so it's now three hundred and thirty thousand instead of the three hundred thousand. And their bill is going to go up five hundred dollars, where that thirty thousand comes away from the residential side and over to the commercial. So now on the residential side, you're only raising six hundred and seventy thousand. And that's going to give them a reduction of two hundred and fourteen dollars. Again, another example, at twenty percent, you could see now the commercial industrial properties are raising three hundred and sixty thousand. And the residential properties are only raising six hundred and forty thousand. So it's important just to show here, what's happening really is you're taking money that would have been raised by the residential properties and moving it over to come, be raised from the commercial, industrial, and personal property. And a few other examples, at thirty percent, forty percent, and fifty percent, where at fifty percent now, the original three hundred thousand is now four hundred and fifty thousand that's going to be raised from the commercial, industrial, and personal property. And the residential class is down to five hundred and fifty thousand. And you can see there's a thousand dollars savings for the residential property owner and twenty five hundred dollar increase for the commercial property. And bear in mind, that's the same valued property on either side, just with a different use. So here's where we're at this year, okay? This year, we have the residential average single family at seven hundred and eleven thousand, seven hundred and forty dollars and our average commercial industrial value at two point nine nine million dollars. Okay, and you can see our twenty nine point five four percent of commercial, industrial, and personal property or non-residential value and sixty six point five, um, oh, excuse me, one point six nine nine of, uh, in value and four point oh five billion in, uh, value of residential. If we were to do a ten percent shift, you can see the amount being raised by the commercial industrial property went from twenty seven point eight nine four million to thirty point six eight three million. And there's a decline on the residential side from sixty six point five to sixty three point seven. And the average single family saved four hundred and eighty four dollars and the average commercial went up four thousand, nine hundred and forty dollars. At twenty percent, similar thing, um, you have that twenty seven point eight nine million dollars going up to thirty three point four million. And the residential side going down from sixty six point five million to sixty point nine million. The average single family would save ninety, nine hundred and seventy five dollars. And the average commercial industrial property would increase by nine thousand, eight hundred and fifty dollars. And we have a couple other examples there. And we'll come back to this. I just wanted to demonstrate really how that shift is happening, what you're doing. You're taking money being raised by one side and moving it to the other. And here lays out some of the options. Now, this, it allows you to shift in the first year up to a hundred and fifty percent of the commercial industrial levy. Adoption of a residential factor of one results in a single tax rate. The town of Westboro has always taxed property equitably with a single rate. And the impact on the property classes, you can see, as follows, examples from one to one point five. And here are some examples of how it would break down, um, for the different property classes. At a ten percent, the average single family, as I mentioned earlier, would save four hundred and eighty four dollars. The average commercial industrial would increase four thousand, nine hundred and forty dollars. One thing I added this year, um, because I got a lot of questions about it, what happens to apartment buildings? Well, the average high-value apartment building is thirty five million dollars in our town, and they pay it based upon a residential rate. So that thirty five million dollar off apartment building is going to save a hundred and twenty thousand, four hundred dollars at the max. And the same valued commercial property is going to increase by two hundred and eighty seven thousand, three hundred and fifty dollars. And then taking a look at the same valued property, the seven hundred and eleven thousand, seven hundred and forty dollar average single family and looking at that same commercial property at a fifteen percent shift. The average single family house would save seven hundred and thirty three dollars. But that same valued property as a commercial property would increase in taxes by one thousand, seven hundred and fifty eight dollars. And here you can see demonstrated the ratio as you go up from one to one point five, how they relate to one another. The blue being residential savings and the red being commercial, industrial, personal property increase. So why do we do this? State law allows us to shift and we do that because it offers residential property owners tax relief. You know, this is why it was created, to give residential property owners tax relief. Okay, what are the cons? Higher commercial taxes inhibits commercial growth, right? We've discussed last year whether or not that is measurable. And I always say you don't know what you don't get, right? We have vacant land in town. If people are kicking tires and they're comparing one community or another and they say, well, Westboro has lower taxes, my expenses could be lower, that might be more attractive than someplace else where the expenses are higher. I grant you, Westboro is a great location. It really is. Route nine, four ninety five, it's fantastic. One of our greatest assets right now is our industrial property, okay? The industrial market is very strong. It's not sexy, but it's strong, okay? And that drives property value. It creates jobs. And I have to tell you that it is good for the town, but it's one of those things where you don't get what you don't get. I mean, we just don't know. The other aspect of it is that higher expenses in buildings get passed on to the tenants. So when you increase commercial property taxes, it affects the small businesses. The small businesses pay the expenses of the properties that they rent. So those get directly passed on and the higher asking rents can inhibit new, new business. You know, it's great to have businesses along Route nine, but vacant storefronts don't help us either when all of a sudden the, the CAM charges are going to be higher. Higher commercial taxes can reduce commercial property values. And again, that's all tied to the expenses. If someone purchasing a building will do an income approach and they're going to look at what the expenses are at the building. Are they higher or lower than another building they might be considered, considering buying? And then it's allowed by law, but is it fair and equitable? That's a question you have to ask yourself, that someone once asked me when I started in this business. That's really a, a personal question. Moving on to our residential exemption. There's a few criteria for the residential exemption. A property must be owner occupied and a primary residence. We've estimated that approximately five thousand, four hundred and forty four properties in town would qualify for this. The exemption's a fixed amount of a value reduction. Unlike other exemptions, this is not a money reduction, it's a value reduction with a maximum of thirty five percent. And it's based upon the average residential property, not the average single family property, okay? The levy amount to be raised by the residential class must stay the same. So when we reduce the value, it's going to increase the residential tax rate. And by doing this, it creates a natural breakpoint. So this year, all properties valued over seven hundred and forty four thousand, eighty five dollars would see an increase in taxes with a ten percent, uh, example. Only seventeen of three, three hundred and fifty one communities adopt residential exemption, and here's a list of them. They all have a few things in common. They all have a high number of non-owner occupied properties like Boston or Brookline or Cambridge or Chelsea or Everett or Somerville. Or their vacation spots like Tisbury, Truro, um, Wellfleet. Those vacation spots have second homes. Those second homes would not benefit from the residential exemption. So let's just break down exactly what the mechanics of this are. The average residential value in town is six hundred and fifty three thousand, five hundred and four dollars. And you'll note that that is less than the average single family because again, it's the average residential value. That includes all residential class properties, condos, vacant land, all residential class values. The estimated eligible properties are five thousand, four hundred and forty four. So if you took that five, four, four, four and multiplied it by sixty five, three fifty, which would be the reduction, it gives you three hundred and fifty five point seven million dollars. So that's the amount that we would reduce the total value of the residential class. So our total value of our residential class is four billion dollars. So we're going to take away that three hundred and fifty five million and it leaves us with three point six nine six million dollars. So that three point six nine six million needs to raise sixty two point five million dollars, which is the amount that the residential class was set to raise at the seventy, uh, plus percent of the levy. So when you do that math to determine a new tax rate, the residential tax rate under this scenario would be seventeen point nine, seventeen dollars and ninety nine cents. And this is a ten percent adjustment. All residential values, uh, above seven forty four, eighty five would see an increase in taxes. There's approximately five thousand, six hundred and ninety seven single family and condominiums in town. One thousand, five hundred and eighty four or twenty eight percent of these would see an increase in taxes, while four thousand, one hundred and thirteen of them would see a reduction. And one of the things that I'll just point out here is unlike other exemptions, there's no means test to this. So you have four thousand, one hundred and thirteen people who will receive some benefit from this and you have no idea if they really need it. It's very possible that those fifteen hundred and eighty four people might be cash poor, you know, or house poor, right? And so there's no means-based evaluation of what benefit you're passing on at the expense of others. And so here are some examples of how that would impact. The average single family property with an exemption, okay? Would be saving fifty one dollars. A higher valued property at a million dollars, that million dollar house, their taxes would increase by four hundred and four dollars. But a lower fam, lower valued single family property of four hundred and fifty thousand is, would save four hundred and sixty five. But mind you, that's their house value. That's not their income, right? That's just the house that they live in. They could have a second house. If this is their primary residence, they would receive a benefit here. And then I thought we'd take a look at the average apartment building of thirty million dollars in this case. They would see an increase of forty seven thousand, four hundred dollars, and that's going to be paid by their tenants. It's not the business that's going to eat that. They're going to pass it right on into their rents. Lastly, small commercial exemption. These properties must be Class Three commercial properties. It does not apply to industrial properties. They must be valued under a million dollars and all tenants within those properties must have less than ten employees. The maximum reduction available is ten percent of value to be borne by the commercial industrial levy, similar to the residential exemption. It's a shift within that. We've identified fifty potential properties that could be eligible for this. Fourteen of thirty, three hundred and fifty one communities have adopted the small commercial exemption. It's very difficult to identify the properties that would qualify for this. Most of this type of exemption would go to the property owner. These smaller properties are typically not properties that pass these expenses on to their tenants. These are gross rents, you know, these are mom and pops that are just paying per square foot. They're not necessarily, well, they're paying per square foot plus utilities. They're not getting past all the expenses on. So this exemption really often benefits the property owner. But it does impact all commercial industrial because it's going to change that commercial industrial rate. So you could see a five hundred thousand dollar property, uh, with the exemption would save eight hundred and two dollars and fifty cents. Where a non-qualifying property would increase twenty dollars. And a non-qualifying, higher valued property, their taxes will increase by eight hundred dollars. So let's just re- refresh what we're going to vote on tonight. A selection of a, of a minimum residential factor of one would yield a single tax rate of sixteen dollars and forty one cents. That's estimated. The actual tax rate will be set, um, in the coming days as I, uh, Jason and I finalize numbers and submit them to the state for approval. Uh, but the projected single rate would be sixteen dollars and forty one cents. Vote on whether to adopt a residential exemption, okay? And vote on whether to adopt a small commercial exemption. That's all I have. I'm happy to take questions.
I have a couple really basic ones. Uh, John, can you back, go back to the slide where you had a list of the primary commercial payers? Uh, not commercial, the largest taxpayers, and just for clarification, um. So you have Cumberland Farms' residential apartments, is that correct?
No, that's not correct at all.
Okay.
Ian usually points out the obvious mistakes, but.
Okay, well, he told me to do that tonight. No, no, okay, no. I just, no, no, I just wanted to make sure I didn't, maybe, maybe they do. Okay. And then, uh, if you can go forward to the slide where, uh, you were talking about the residential exemption and, um, you had the two numbers up there, five, six, five thousand, six hundred and ninety seven versus five forty four. So, uh, yeah, that one right there. So, um, if you could just walk me through the eligible properties at five thousand, four, four, four versus the five, six, nine, seven, what's the difference, i- i- the net difference of the two hundred or so properties? What am I, what's excluded to get to five, six, nine?
Non-owner occupied properties.
Okay, non-owner.
They're not necessarily all rentals. Some of them might just be second homes. They might be snowbirds. We've got a lot of condos where their mailing address is out of state. So they may live here. They're not necessarily rentals or second homes necessarily. They just have purchased a second home where maybe tax benefits are better in Florida.
Okay, I just wanted to know. Okay, thanks.
That's what I hear anyways.
That's all for now, but.
Yeah, I just had a, a clarifying question. I, I may have misunderstood you. First of all, John, thank you for putting this together and bringing it out in a way that, and presenting it in a way that makes it easier to understand. Um, it's, there's a lot of data here, so I appreciate your time and the team's time in working on this. My question is, I, I thought I heard you say that commercial apartment buildings were actually part of the residential? Or I, my understanding is that they're actually commercial?
No, no, residential apartment buildings are residential.
So Avalon would be a residential?
Yes.
Building. Okay, all right, thank you. And then I guess just a follow-up question, I, I, you know, before others speak. I'm hoping that we can vote on these individually as opposed to one motion.
Can I, oh, can I just ask another question? Before Alan?
Sure.
Okay. John, can you, I, I recall we had this conversation last year, um, if we were to adopt a split tax rate, can you walk us through the future votes of walking that split tax rate back?
Sure. Well, as we know, taxes are driven by spending, right? And so next year, when we put together the budget and the levy, we're still going to have an increase in taxes. We have an existing split, right? And so you have a choice now because taxes are going to increase. You can either absorb that entire increase on the existing split shift, right? Or you can try to absorb more of that back on the residential property. So you're sort of, you're taking that increase in taxes plus what you're shifting back, okay? Or you can try to reduce further or keep it level by shifting more. It's a lot harder to go back than it is to go forward. Somewhat like a operational deficit. Somewhat like a operational deficit.
Yep, thank you.
In State House, the fiscal year '24 budget has some new local option exemptions. Have we yet received any word on what those are?
Yes, I could tell, I could tell you that the senior work-off is increasing to a potential twenty, twenty-five hundred dollars. So we'll be taking a look at that, whether, bringing it forward potentially at town meeting. We'll talk about that at the next Board of Assessors meeting, as well as the recent means-based exemption that we have, the home rule. They increased that to twenty-four hundred dollars for the calendar 2023 taxes as a circuit breaker. So we're going through that process now as our first year, getting the word out and getting applications and trying to process that. A meeting with the gentleman who does the account, does some of the tax returns through the senior center because we want to just make people aware that it could impact their circuit breaker for next year if you reduce their taxes for this year. So we're just trying to really educate the public so that they can make an informed decision. And I have greater concern relative to how a larger twenty-four hundred dollars is going to impact and what type of match that would be. So I'll look to get some more information from accountants prior to going forward with that. The way our legislation reads, it's up to 100% match. So we may find, when we get feedback from people in the accounting world, that it's not in the taxpayer's best interest to give them a full twenty-four hundred dollar match if it's going to impact their next year's circuit breaker by bringing their tax amount down. So that's a long way of saying, yes, we're looking into it.
Okay. And I believe there's also one related to landlords who rent affordable apartments?
Yes.
Okay. But that's the extent of what I've heard. Have you actually received any definition of what's included in?
I read it. You know, I read them all. It's just a matter of sort of sitting down and wrapping my hands about, around whether or not it's something that would make sense, given the segment and demographic that it would hit for us within certain units. Because it's very unit-specific, and I don't know how you monitor it. But we could talk, yeah, we could look at that together.
Excellent.
Thank you.
I have no questions.
No? Just had one follow-up. John, your answer to Shelby on that last question she asked, I'm just curious, does that only imply, is your answer only relevant to CIP, or is it relevant also to the residential exemption?
You all have to repeat the question. I don't know which one you're referring to.
So the question was in regards to, you know, what is, what is it to roll back? You know, how do we roll back off of this? And I think your answer was that it's difficult to roll back because in future years, you're going to have the increase in taxes based on new, you know, spending of the town.
Yeah.
But also, you'd have to bore the burden of that alleviation you had from the commercial split that you just made, right? How do you roll back on that? Does that also apply to the residential exemption? Is it difficult to roll off the residential exemption?
I don't know because so few towns do it that I would have to look at those numbers. I couldn't even tell you. I don't know why it wouldn't be because you're giving people a break at one point, and then the following year, you'd have to vote it again, and they're either going to get it or not get it. And if they don't get it, their taxes are going up that much more, you know?
Right, but don't, right, yeah.
So yes, I guess, now that we talked it through, yes.
Yeah, I would think that what would happen there is if you voted in one year, then voted out the next year, those that qualified are going to pay more, those that paid more, the higher, or the higher-valued properties will pay
Pay less.
Right, it'll all be made up based on the new levy for the residential portion of the levy.
Yeah, but what Ian's point is valid. So the fifteen hundred and eighty-four people, their taxes will go up less than the five thousand, four hundred and forty, or the four thousand, one hundred and thirteen.
Right.
They're going to go up whatever it was supposed to be, plus their residential exemption from this year. Yeah. All right.
Questions? No questions for me?
Actually, I did have one and just, I should know the answer to this, but I'll ask it. I think I know the answer, but I'll ask it. Well, we're adopting the new CPA surcharge or tax or whatever on that. Is that borne by every taxpayer? So commercial, industrial?
Yes. Yeah, CPA is, and the stormwater is coming as well. And the stormwater, if you can imagine, the largest amounts of impervious surface in town are commercial-industrial properties, they're going to have a big expense coming at the foot of the, the stormwater fund as well. So you have both the stormwater and the CPA.
Thank you.
All right, thanks, John. This being a public hearing, we're now taking comments from the public.
Good evening. My name is Mark Verro. I'm here representing Carruth Capital. We're the second-largest taxpayer now. We used to be number one for many years. We're located at 116 Flanders Road in Westborough. One of the things that a lot of the towns that we deal with that do have the split tax rate offer tax breaks, tax incremental financing. And there are two benefits to that for a tenant, a company, is that, one, it usually, it almost always means you pay less in taxes. But it also means that you're going to know what your tax rate, what your valuation is going to be for several, many years going forward. And, you know, just even having these, you know, discussions every year, you know, commercial tenants and owners always wonder, you know, is it, is it waiting, are we going to have our tax rates go up by 50% next year? I've been in, I've worked in Westborough for 38 years now. Thirty-two years of that was with Carruth Capital. You know, every building we have, I bought for the company. Every building we sold, I sold. And in those 38 years, we went for one tax incremental financing, and that was with Olympus. And one of the things that John mentioned is, you know, a lot of the towns, you don't get to see who you don't, you know, who write, write you off even before they come. And, and to some extent, even at Carruth, sometimes we don't, we don't see them. But I, I know what went on behind the scenes with Olympus, and both Marlborough and Framingham were desperately trying to, you know, get them there. And Framingham was 990, and in fact, the Olympus people said that the business person in Framingham was just about stalking them to, to get them over there. And so when you, when you do have a tax, a split tax rate, you're, you're going to see a lot of that. And when the, the community is structured as a city, tax incremental financing is a relatively smooth process. I know in Marlborough, they hand them out all the time, and even to small companies, you know, five or 10,000 feet. In Westborough, you, you really only see it for the larger companies. And it's quite a process in Westborough. We had a town meeting here to approve it. Imagine if you had to do that, you know, by, you know, five times as many, you know, and then you're having all kinds of tenants coming in here. So the West, in order for Westborough to compete and give tax incremental finance, it's going to be a complicated, drawn-out process. And one of the things, in John's example, he mentioned it at the end, but commercial properties, their value is based strictly on income. School system, all that, you know, it's strictly on income. And so when you're increasing the taxes, you're reducing the income, and the value of the building goes down. So in that example where you had a one million dollar building, you know, building, and, you know, you had, that building is no longer going to be worth a million dollars. So it's not a linear function where you, where you increase the expenses and the building's still going to be worth the same. That, that's not the case. And so, for example, let's say you increase the taxes by one dollar a foot. We, we deal in per-square-foot prices. Well, if you're looking to make a, a 7% return on that, your, the value of the building is going to go down by fourteen dollars and twenty-eight cents. Well, you know, I mean, there were, there were a lot of buildings in Westborough that are, that are worth, you know, a hundred dollars a foot or whatever. So if you're, you're taking 14% off the value of the building, well, I guess it's more than 14% if you're taking fourteen dollars off of a hundred-dollar square-foot building. I mean, just in the last couple of years, I've seen buildings in Framingham sell for, in 990, for $66 a foot. 100 Pennsylvania have about $62 a foot. The Good, the Good and Plenty building, which is at the other intersection near TJX, we call it the Good and Plenty building, I think it's 111 Speed Street, has the arches, those colors of purple, whatever, like Good and Plenty candy. That building sold for $110 a foot, and that wasn't vacant either. So one of the things too, is that although the commercial market, industrial properties are very strong, they were weak for many years when all this manufacturing went to China. We had buildings that were vacant for two or three years at a time when Selectron moved out. While when all these delivery companies and Amazon and all, all came back, all of a sudden, you know, industrial properties were the golden child. Well, as, as well as industrial properties, and commercial properties that are office are terrible right now. I think one of the things, you know, we own both, and we can, I can tell you that some of the rents we have are what we charged 20 years ago, but all our expenses are, are much higher, the vacancy is much higher, and everybody is downsizing. You know, Bank of New York Mellon is a perfect example. They were at 4,400 computer driver building we sold to Amazon. They had 305,000 feet. They just downsized into one of our other buildings at 118 Flanders Road for just over 70,000 feet. United Site Services, they have the porta-potties. They were in that building at 70,000 feet, and they went, they dropped to a little less than 20,000 feet. Verizon had a whole floor 42,000 feet. They just worked from home. So, you know, it's, it's just a terrible time to be increasing taxes. And as far as who pays the taxes, it varies because usually in industrial properties, especially the larger ones, the tenant pays the real estate tax in their proportion to share of the building. Typically, in a multi-office environment, the real estate taxes are included in the rent. So the, the tenant usually, during the term of their lease, if there's an increase in taxes, they might pay for that increase, but they don't pay for the real estate taxes. And when their lease renews, the landlord picks that up. So again, the value of the building is going, is going down. When I first started at Carruth, the real estate tax percentage paid by commercial properties was 50%, and now it's less than 30%. And one of the reasons is that it's much more profitable to build residential property in Westborough than it is to build commercial property. And I think the solution here is to encourage commercial development. And since I've been here, it's, it's, in the 32 years, it's taking longer and it's much more restrictive. You know, when I first started here, it was 40% open space, six stories. Then it went down to 60% open space, and, you know, mandatory setbacks from wetlands. I mean, you, you can't build in wetlands without, you know, you know, very limited and special, but, you know, these mandatory setbacks, we, we have lots in Westboro Office Park, on West Park Drive. The road was put in, the utilities, the traffic studies, millions of dollars were spent. And, and we bought those lots thinking that we could build them, you know, for, you know, put 150,000 feet on two of these lots, 1300 West Park Drive and 2300 West Park Drive. Well, now with the mandatory setbacks, you know, we, we can't build there. You know, Massachusetts is known for being, you know, the strictest, most, you know, the environmental laws, whatever. And the town of Westborough just piled on top of that. And it, it's really affecting the ability to commercial. And as I said, the solution is to build more commercial properties in, in the parks that have already been developed and all the infrastructure is already put in there. And that, we've had the rug pulled out from under us, and now, you know, with the high vacancy and high expense and low rent, to have our taxes, you know, increased on top of that, it's, it's going to devalue the buildings and it's going to drive, you know, tenants and, and companies to other locations. Thank you. If you have any questions, I
Thank you.
Thanks. Which is? Thank you very much.
Good evening. I'm sure none of you are surprised to see me here because I'm here at the EverTax classification hearing, and this will be my third for this month. So I am Karen Chapman, the President of the Court of 9495 Regional Chamber of Commerce. I'm here because business does not have a vote in your town. And that's what I'm here to support your local business community. And we talked a lot about the commercial business, and I'm here to also talk about the small business owner. Approximately 80% of US businesses are considered small businesses, and 95% of them are part of my chamber here, representing Westboro, Northboro, Southboro, and Shrewsbury. The truth is, rent matters to mostly small business too. So at a point where we're talking about shifting the tax burden, this would have a significant trauma on a small business owner. At the end of the day, they are. This community and the local business community are contributing, I believe it was billions of dollars in personal property taxes. 70% is residents here and 30% is, is business here. And I think it sends the wrong message to shift a tax burden to your business community. This business community is so vibrant and diverse, and that's because you've always been very business-friendly. And I have the good luxury of representing five communities who continue to vote for a single tax rate. So on behalf of the small business community here, and your, as your local Chamber of Commerce, I strongly urge you to continue the, continue for a single tax class rate. Thank you.
Good evening. Rod Schaffert, 8 Parkman Street. And having been on the Economic Development Committee, I fully understand their, their argument for having the same tax rate. But I also want to represent the taxpayers. And, you know, the burden that's being placed on our taxpayers right now, I think, is, is really something we need to consider. And to see again that the taxpayers' rates are going up more than the commercial and industrial. In fact, the taxpayers, the single-family homes are helping to support our businesses by taking a bigger percentage of the burden. We talk about the differences in percentages between the residential and the commercial, but we don't look at what the actual dollars are. So if we look at what the actual dollars are this year to next year, some of the commercial businesses, their tax rates will go down because our commercial tax rates have gone up. So as you evaluate this, nobody's talking about adding 50%. But I would strongly suggest we consider keeping the commercial-industrial rate the same as it is this year, allowing the residential rate to go down, which would be maybe 2.5% or something like that.
Anyone else here for open ear? No? Okay. All right, back to discussion. Any thoughts?
I've, whenever. I have thoughts.
Sure, go right ahead.
I just wanted to, to say that as in past years, my vote is not, is to maintain a single tax rate, and it's not to adopt the, either of the exemptions. I think we heard from some of the speakers, I think, you know, the vacancy we see in the commercial office space. I don't think we've seen the full impact of that yet, in the sense that there are long-term leases that are out there in vacant buildings, and when those, because of the work from home, and as those expire, and we try to put new tenants in those buildings, as we heard, those are shrinking. I think, I think things are changing. I mean, I see it mean, I see it, working in Boston, it's not the same as it was before. I think we see it in, in Westboro as well. So it's something we have to keep in mind there of, you know, shifting burdens there is only going to make it worse. It's not going to make it better. I think one thing to consider as well with the businesses, both large and small, is, I said this last year, I mean, they basically absorb the taxes that we decide, but they don't have the opportunity in many cases to vote on what we're going to spend the money on, whether that's us purchasing a building for eight point eight million. They will absorb that without that benefit. So having, and asking them to pay more for something that they don't have the chance to vote for, I think is not fair. And then finally, I just, I'll say it on a positive side, but concern about asking the businesses or the commercial industrials to pay more, is think about the support that the community gets from those businesses, that charitable support, the wonderful event we had on Sunday, and the lights around town and how beautiful it looks. And you look at those banners, yes, there are families paying that, but it's a lot of our businesses, small businesses and large businesses, that contribute. We hear it from the schools. Personally, I hear it from my wife because she asks a lot of people, a lot of businesses for money and is successful getting that. But they're willing to do that because they're part of the community. But my concern is, you know, you start going after them and charging more taxes, is, is that they're going to have the same, A, ability, but two, kind of charitable feel to say, hey, I want to contribute to this community when they're making us pay more than, than others do. So, just a few things there, but, but I do think that, you know, one of the values that, that Westboro has had, and I know the, the values are changing, and Mr. Schaffert's comments are, are, are well spoken, but I think that, that Westboro has benefited and will continue to benefit by making ourselves business friendly. I think the way to do that is maintaining that single tax rate and not, not adopting the exemptions. The final piece I just hit is, is the residential exemption. I think I said this last year too. I, I think that's, you know, that's now looking neighbor to neighbor and saying, hey, you know, your house is just a little bit, undermined, a little bit older, and I'm going to pay more, you're going to pay less. I just think that's putting neighbor, basically pitting neighbor against neighbor, neighborhood against neighborhood. And that's not who this community is. This is a, I think, a, you know, welcoming, inclusive community. And I think by splitting that out, I think that's going to have repercussions that, that we need to think about as well. So that's, for me, on, on the residential exemption side, why I don't support that. Small, commercial, I, I think it's just, it's not really, the, the benefits are minimal. I think we even started a thing, and I don't think there's the work associated trying to figure all that out for the benefit there. To me, is not one that I've heard anybody pounding the table for. And I'm not, so in that, I'm not supportive of that exemption either. That's it.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'll keep my comments focused on the residential exemption because in theory it sounds very attractive. You take the average residential value, you lower it, people who are above that pay more, everyone below that based on the property value, even though there's no means testing, play, pay less. Our housing demographics, however, work against that as really being a benefit. So, based on the current data related to the twenty twenty census, in Westboro, sixty-one point nine percent of our residential units are owned, thirty-eight point one percent are rentals. And it's important because when you look at the value of building for the residential exemption, apartment buildings with five or more units will fall in the increase side. They'll be above that average value or that break-even point. And we'll see tax increases that get paid, get passed on to the tenants. Seventy-seven point five percent of our rental units would be in buildings that would see a tax increase. So roughly seventy-five plus percent of renters will have at some point that tax increase put into their rent. Okay? So then let's look at the demographics. Two statistics, just to give a general sense. Of all of the homeowners, individuals who own their units in Westboro, just under seventy-three percent have household incomes over a hundred thousand. For renters, only twenty-nine percent are above that threshold. And it's a random threshold based on the way the census breaks out incomes. We could, I could dig in and get it more granular than that. More importantly is the concept of burden and extreme burden. So, the U.S. government, the state, locally, we all follow the same rules. You're considered burdened with homeownership if your cost of owning your home or renting your unit is more than thirty percent of your income. You're extremely burdened if it's more than fifty percent. And so when we look at burdened and extremely burdened together, nineteen percent of our homeowners fall into that extreme burden rate. So almost one in five are in a point where the cost of owning their home, which is mortgage, taxes, basic utilities, is above that fifty percent. When you look at our rental residents, that extreme burden rate is forty-five point two percent. And so when we talk about shifting property taxes to higher value residential, knowing that includes our apartment, you know, locally owned and investor-owned five to nine apartment units, as well as our large complexes, we're really talking about shifting the tax burden through the rent, through rent increases to a population that's already significantly extremely burdened. And so when I look at affordability, it's not just looking at the residential homeowner and taxpayer, it's looking at all of our residents, including those who rent. And I, I see this as disproportionately placing a burden on those least able to manage it. And that, and that's those in our, you know, in our rental units. Based on the demographics of our housing and based on the demographics of our population and who's renting and who owns. I see why it works in communities that have much larger populations and much more diverse housing stock. I see it, why it work, you know, particularly when you look at Boston, you look at the residential values of the high-rise buildings downtown and in the Back Bay and in the Seaport, and how, where that offset is on who pays more and who pays less, includes a lot more in the pay less, and a lot more apartment stock in the pay less. I can see why it works in communities with large numbers of second homes because the exemption doesn't apply to them. So it's actually a way to give local taxpayers a break without giving a break to the vacationers and the seasonal occupants. But given our, our percentage of apartments, the fact that our apartment inventory is grossly skewed to large complexes that would see an increase in tax burden, and giving the demographics and the severe burden of housing expense for those in apartments in our community, I just think will be defeating the purpose of the exemption, which is, or I believe what the intent of our board would be, is to help people who are financially strapped, better able to afford it, you know, afford living in the community.
Thank you, Alan.
I'll just say, I'm, I'm happy to see the board has, people have been doing their homework and, and better understanding this topic. You know, last year's presentation that I put together, I spent a lot of time on. I certainly haven't changed my position from last year or the previous year on this topic. The fact of the matter is, I think we all recognize that Prop two and a half was established in the early eighties and is antiquated. It gives us as boards and as communities very little flexibility in how we alleviate the tax burden in our community. These three wheels or three sides of the scale that we can move around to adjust that tax burden, that's the only way we can do it. You know, I'm, 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 I hear from the business community, I respect them, and, and totally understand where they're coming from. And I certainly value the, the perspective that Ian shared with us in regards to the impacts of the business community. On the residential side, my feeling is that the, you know, again, Prop two and a half was put in place when, I will say, the equitability of the community as far as the income balance of the community was probably much more level than it is today. And as a result, there's a discrepancy. And Ian, you talked about, you know, the, the neighbors. Unfortunately, that's already happening today. And because of the fact that the community is, as we've all, I think at one point or another, have said, we, we have a spending issue in town. And as a result, those that have not are resulting, a dollar is worth far more for them than the, those that have. And I think that it's important to recognize that when we look at the, the data that John shared with us, we see an increase of a few hundred dollars on a million dollar home, and we compare that to, you know, upwards of five hundred dollars in the example, on a lower income home, seventy-four percent of the community would benefit from that. And seventy-four percent of the community, I don't know what the average, well, I'll just take the average four hundred and whatever dollars it was on that average price home, that's somebody paying their heat. That's somebody affording their prescriptions. That's somebody being able to make rent. And as somebody, I, I don't know if this is true, but I, I absolutely was at a point in my life where I did have, have struggles paying my electric bill instead of my mortgage. So I have experienced that, that situation. And it's huge. And I just think as a community, if there's a way for us to alleviate that tax burden in a way that allows people to, to not have to struggle between life, you know, sustaining expenses versus a tax bill, that's important. That's important in our community. And I'm less worried about neighbors saying, hey, your house is worth less than mine, you're paying less taxes than me, because that already exists today. And finally, on that thought, I think that, you know, the, the folks that are going to town meeting, and I absolutely encourage every resident in town to go to town meeting. But the fact is, I suspect that the people who are voting in most of the things in town can afford those things, can afford those additional services. It's the people who are working two or three jobs that can't attend to a town meeting because they've got young kids at home and can't show up and, and vote these things down rightfully if they cho, so choose, that can't afford it, right? And we're putting an undue tax burden on them because a small portion, a smaller portion of our community is saying, we can't afford it. So the residential exemption, in my mind, is an equitable solution. And I know that the term equitability has been thrown out a lot here tonight. I just feel that, you know, I gotta, I'm going to continue with that path. And again, I'll ask the, the board to hopefully vote on these three options individually so that we can call out them. Thank you.
So thank you to all the board members who've commented so far. I think that what was evident to me in John's presentation tonight is the, the various growing disparities and the impact of being able to, should we decide to shift burdens around in some way, what that impact could be on increasingly larger percentages of the population. Patrick, you just shared some examples. But conversely, Alan made, you make some great points around rental properties and what that would be as a equally disproportionate impact, depending upon what decisions are made tonight. I do think that Westboro, as a community, we need to be focusing on commercial development and growth. And, and in, as long as you've been on the board, or certainly as long as I've served with you, we've been talking about that. And so I think that that certainly is an area that, you know, this board and other boards can work with economic development, et cetera, to increase that and potentially the planning board. I think we heard some comments from the public tonight on ways in which we, forget the same, but might relax some of the requirements to encourage that kind of development that would shift burden, or I should say, attract businesses and offset residential impact. I have grave concern around a split tax rate because of the long-term implication of that. And, and that's why I asked John the question. We talked about it at length last year. And I just worry about the, you know, it's sort of like getting hooked on something and, you know, you're like, well, we shifted it this year, let's do a little bit more. I just don't see us going back. And then you get to a point of no return, and who knows if any of us are here, and I don't say that as a political statement, but, you know, then you're like, what do you do? And so, it's a spending issue. It's, and so I think this board, any other board, maybe we need to start taking a harder look at how we're spending. Having said that, so much of what this town provides is in service and it's in people. And when you look at actually what comes forward from a budget perspective, and whether it be free cash requests or, or, you know, and capital investments, these are things that the community expects, blanket statement here, but the community expects Westboro to maintain a certain level of standard of service, whether it's police and fire, schools, senior services, recreation, fields, whatever. And, you know, it's, it's a delicate balance. I don't want to say they're doing nothing, nothing sounds very passive, like same old, same old, that what we've done every year. But I think at the same time, Westboro continues to be a very attractive place to live and to work. Love to see more commercial, or less commercial vacancy. But it's an attractive place. And I think that what we've been doing is working. And to make the changes from this split tax rate, I would, I would, I'm not in support of it all. The residential exemption certainly has its appeal, but I will tell you, I'm, I'm worried about divisiveness in community, in the community in general. And now when we start to put hard dollars around it that are kind of mandated, less around evaluation, which is sort of a, not an abstract calculation, but it's, I, I, I don't see that having a long-term, you know, positive impact. It will have an impact, Patrick, to your point, on, you know, someone saving, I'm going to save five hundred dollars this year. Great. But the long-term implications of that in the community, I just, I, I'm, I'm not there. I, I'm not seeing this a strong enough case for it. And so, I, I think those are my only comments, so.
Yeah. So for myself, I thought Mr. Bro made an interesting comment earlier when he talked about the differences between cities and towns, and how where cities have split rates, they can offset that by easily bringing forth TIFs for companies, and how towns, it is quite a process in order to have, and you need the entire community to make a decision about it, which I had not considered previously. Thank you for that. I think secondarily, I think Alan made a very good point about the residential exemption and how it will shift a burden onto renters, who, a lot of renters in our community who are, will have difficulty affording that shift, that increase to their rent that, that will be placed upon them. So I am, I think, you know, we'll continue to be for a single tax rate and for neither a residential nor a small, commercial exemption. I don't think anybody here questions the, that there's no necessary necessity to have a small, commercial exemption in this town. It doesn't benefit potentially our small businesses, it appears. So with that, I find if we make, do this as three separate motions, if people would like to move forward as such.
Sure. I'm fine with doing three motions that select board member Walt should, Walt should recommend it. I would make a motion to maintain a single tax rate by adopting the residential factor of one.
Second. Thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor? Five to zero.
I would move that we not adopt a residential exemption.
Second?
Discussion? All those in favor? All those opposed? Which is four to one? And one more?
I'll move that we do not adopt a small commercial exemption.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor? Five to zero. All right. Thank you very much. Can I get a motion to close out the hearing?
So moved.
Seconded. All those in favor? Five to zero. Thank you very much. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. Thank you to the public for your comments and for participating.
I think he's here.
Yep.
Oh, he is here. Okay. Oh, yeah. Yeah.
He might not be able to speak.
Okay. Our next item is number five, request to install a menorah on the rotary Rabbi Fogelman in the Shabbat of Central Mass.
Good evening, everybody. So.
If you could grab that mic, yeah.
That's good.
Got everyone's attention.
Working.
Fantastic.
Just ask him to introduce himself.
Oh, yes. If you would introduce yourself, yes.
So back in 1975, the first public menorah was displayed in San Francisco. And following that, number 15, I think, in the world, was us in Worcester, Massachusetts, in Worcester. And then eventually, we had Chabad activities throughout the world. Today, there are probably 150,000 public menorah displays throughout the world, from the Eiffel Tower, wherever you see them everywhere. I know we had one here in the past in Westboro, and it was under someone else. It was, Westboro was under our jurisdiction, and I have assumed full responsibility for this area for Chabad. And as such, I'd like, I'd love to place the menorah again this year. December 7th is the first night of Hanukkah. And on that following Monday, we'd like to have just a little ceremony here. We're going to light it every night, but we'd like to have a gathering on that Monday of Hanukkah, if possible. And we'll just give out chocolates to the kids. And it's a fun thing that we do throughout the whole world, so.
Sounds good. Sounds good. And you are, again, are, is it Rabbi Fogelman?
I'm Rabbi Fogelman. I'm in charge of Chabad of Central Mass. And as such, I have, under me is Westboro and Shrewsbury and Framingham and United. So I'm here on behalf of Westboro. And I've assumed responsibility personally for Westboro. In the meantime, so I could place a permanent rabbi here in Westboro.
Thank you very much. Any questions?
Just a question. Just one of the concerns we've always had for the celebration event is just any coordination awareness around with if food is going to be served, coordination with the Board of Health, and just that the police are aware for safety, kids on the rotary, adults on the rotary. But those would be the only two things that I would just ask through our, working with our town manager's office or the departments to make sure that all of those boxes are checked.
So are you saying, so are we allowed to give out chocolate spoons to kids, or?
Yeah. I don't know the regulations around the Board of Health.
We can, we can reach out to you and connect to you.
We'll talk about it after. Yeah, okay, fine.
I think it's more prepared food than.
Yeah, I know. Just for the record, we have a wonderful cultural restaurant. I won't say that's under us. Certified, citywide, et cetera.
Okay. I'm going to have to visit. And just, just again, just making sure that you're coordinating with our police department so that they know the hours and that they're aware of. And so this would go up on, just to be confirmed, the December 6th.
December 7th in the evening is, yeah, we're going to put up the 6th and December 7th the first night of Hanukkah.
Okay. And then the only other thing that I would ask, and this has been an issue in the past, is that we can't have any advertisements on the menorah?
So I have a question about that.
Yep.
All right. So the one who instituted this whole program was Rabbi Schnerson, the world-renowned Rabbi, who passed away 30 years ago, almost 30 years ago. The only request he has is that we wish everyone happy Hanukkah from Chabad. Is that allowed?
Yes. Yes. There's no phone numbers. Call us. That, yeah.
That is fine.
No, that's fine. And happy Hanukkah. So, yes, yes.
We all set? Are we good?
Almost. So I move to permit Central Mass Chabad to place a menorah on the rotary beginning December 6, 2023, until December 18, 2023, and further to allow a gathering celebration on December 11, 2023, at 6:00 PM to conclude at approximately 6:30 PM, provisional on coordination with public safety and if food's being served, the Board of Health.
Seconded. All those in favor?
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Happy Hanukkah.
We're a little ahead of schedule, so if we want to skip to number seven, the active transportation.
Sure. Sounds good. Active Transportation and Safety Committee composition and charge.
So you did have an updated composition and charge document in your packet that Active Transportation and Safety Committee did meet yesterday. And so they did provide some updates, which is on the desk and is marked up. I would say that their amendments were, you know, consistent with what we were trying to do. So to back up, the Active Transportation and Safety Committee was formed during 2020. It was the merging of both Bike Industry Advisory Group, committee, Bike Industry Advisory Committee, and also the Public Safety Committee. And so what we did was we had merged these two groups and we created an 11-member committee, which had a significant number of staff on that committee. The purpose of that was twofold. One was that the Public Safety Committee was already made up of several staff members, because a lot of the things coming before them were really concerns that couldn't be handled by staff. So if someone was looking for a flash and crosswalk sign, or they were concerned about the speed limits on their street, they would go to the Public Safety Committee. The coordination with Active Transportation and Safety made sense. We are, there was already one representative actually on the Public Safety Committee. Active Transportation, or BPAC at the time, was doing a lot of work specifically around BWALT. And through our strategic plan, we had identified the need for staff to become more involved in that BWALT process in order to help it move forward. And so that was really what drove the combination of these two committees. We also, since the creation of ATSC, we have worked on, we adopted the feasibility study, or the board accepted the feasibility study, and then we also created an implementation plan, which had some role for Active Transportation and Safety, but again, took a lot of that BWALT work onto staff. So in talking to our new Director of Planning, we talked about sort of the efficiency of this group and its ability to really focus on some of the outcomes or the recommendations and goals of the master plan. There are several goals in the master plan that are identified as being owned by the Active Transportation and Safety Committee. There's, as you can see, there was a very long list of things that needed to be accomplished, and they're really, are under the current mission and goals of the ATSC. And there was really, there's really not a need for that much staff to be on the committee if we're going to be focusing on those master plan goals. Additionally, as I mentioned at the Budget Summit, the Director of Planning is looking to create a transportation planner in an assistant position. And so assuming that that moves forward, that would be a good synergy between the Planning Department and this new ATSC. So what we're proposing is removing the staff-level positions from the voting positions and changing the composition to be five residents. The ATSC has taken this up now at two different meetings. They're seem comfortable with it, understanding that they would have the staff support from the Director of Planning currently. If the assistant position were to move forward, they would have that staff support, and then we would pull in these staff members as needed. In conjunction with doing that, we would be, also be removing that, that sort of hearing role of the ATSC, which is when folks have those concerns about traffic or, you know, other sort of issues in the community, that they wouldn't anymore bring them to the ATSC. That was also becoming a little bit complicated because that really is a staff role. Staff would just respond to that. ATSC was sort of just guiding people through that process. So understanding that we need to come up with a good internal process for those folks to share their concerns, which sometimes they already do outside of the ATSC. So you can see that we're really focused now on the master plan goals, which have been identified through the 2021 master plan. Also, they would have a similar role as the select board in the review of site plan and special permits, meaning that they would be given those applications to review, and then they could provide comments to the Planning Board, understanding that the Planning Board will take those comments with all other comments and move forward as they find appropriate. They would provide advice to the select board and Planning Board and other town officials, or make recommendations on matters related to recreational paths and active transportation, encourage a bicycle community and community investment in bicycle racks, signage and other mutually beneficial amenities. This is something that the BPAC used to do, especially pre-COVID. They would hold events for cyclists. They would give kids bike helmets, things like that. Identify opportunities for bicycle education. They would continue to work on the BWALT under the direction of the Director of Planning and really support community outreach. And they would also be working with the Planning Director and Conservation Director on trail maintenance plans for the BWALT trail. And then finally, they have provided support and would continue to provide support related to grant applications. And then coordinate through the Planning Department with neighboring communities. And like all committees, they would continue to file an annual report. So we're asking that we reduce the size of the committee from that 11, which is a really large number anyway for a committee, to the five, and then also adopt this new submission, set of activities.
Sort of as liaison to the ATSC, Christie captured it all, so I'm not going to repeat anything. I think the work is here, and I support this change.
Want to make the motion?
Yeah. I'm sorry, was it, did you mention a vote of the committee, or?
I actually don't think that they voted, but they actually did, had a working meeting yesterday where they created these amendments. I'm not sure that they actually voted on it.
Yeah. So I would move to approve the amended charge and composition of the Active Transportation Safety Committee as presented with the committee changes to the board tonight.
Second.
All those in favor? Five to zero. Thank you for your work on this.
Yeah, Christie has done a lot of work on this, so thank you, Christie, for continuing to move this forward.
Thanks.
Item number six, the Youth and Family Services Service Delivery Model.
Yep. So this, oh, sorry, go ahead.
So I'll recuse myself, as my wife works in the department, so I'll, thank you.
So this agenda item is in follow-up to the November 12th agenda item, in which I presented a draft scope of services and draft description for the board. Not asking for a vote at the time, but really just working through some more details of this hybrid model that we've talked about, retaining one of our employees as a town employee, and then providing clinical services through a contracted service. We've been working with Shrewsbury Youth and Family Services on really creating that format and developing the scope of how that would look. So tonight is an opportunity for you all to meet staff and for the community to meet the staff at SYFS, Shrewsbury Youth and Family Services. And so I'll invite them up here. They have a presentation on their organization for you.
Hi, all. Thank you guys so much for letting us come and meet with you all. My name is Jen Repkin. I'm the Clinical Director at Shrewsbury Youth and Family Services.
I'm Allison Ecclestone. I'm the Director of School Based Services.
And Lynn Lynch, interim Executive Director and also Business Director, holding two positions right now.
Lynn is multi-talented. Is there a call?
I'll just say, all right, and let's just jump right in here. So, next slide, please. So just briefly, this is our mission. I'm not going to read through the whole thing, but just so you guys are aware.
Yep.
Thank you.
They'll pick it up, but just.
Absolutely. So our mission basically focuses on the equitable delivery of mental health services, as well as a focus on eradicating stigma around mental health. Again, you have the presentation. You can read it. You don't need every word. So just wanted to give you a brief overview of that. Next slide, please. We have a variety of community partners when we work in our current agency. While we're in Shrewsbury, and we do work, quite a bit of work outside of just Shrewsbury, but in Shrewsbury, we partner very, very closely with our police and other emergency responders. In fact, today, I took a referral from one of our police partners, like just five hours ago. So very, very close partnership there. We partner with a variety of school districts, obviously Shrewsbury, that's not a big surprise, but Allison's program, her, she's the Director of School Based Services. She partners with Grafton, Wachusett, Oxford, St. John, St. Mary's. I feel like I'm missing someone, but it's possible that I'm not, as well as a lot of other local service providers. For example, we have our local food pantry. Right now, we have the migrants who are living in a local shelter. We're partnering with SMOC, who are providing these sort of onsite services there. We also work very, very closely with our senior center, our Senior Center and Council on Aging, as well as Elder Services of Worcester. And finally, we even partner with the library. So we really try and work with both the public sector and the private sector in the human service world. Next slide, please. We have a pretty diverse funding source, which is really, really nice. Our sort of biggest source of funding, I'm sorry.
You're fine.
Anxious about the microphones here. Our primary, I guess our biggest piece of funding comes from the town of Shrewsbury. They fund a lot of our services, including our three-town clinicians, which I think is the type of model that you guys here in Westboro might be looking to sort of replicate. We also have, as a 501(c)(3), apply for grants all day, every day. I feel like someone is always working on a grant. Lynn and I were doing that earlier today, for example. We have federal funding, state funding, foundation funding. If there's a place where we can find funding, we will go after it. That is definitely sort of a skill set and one of our sort of biggest sources of revenue outside of the town. We also, as I mentioned earlier, Allison has a whole department that she runs, and a large source of funding for that is through contracts with various schools and school districts. Right now, we don't really have any particular relationship with the Westboro Public Schools. Whether or not that will change, I don't know, but that I don't think is, that's sort of outside of this conversation anyway. We also have, you know, get a lot of funding from corporate sponsorships, private donations. Our annual appeal is going on right now. And then within our clinic, it's a very, very small amount of our overall budget, but we do charge some fees for some of our groups and programs. That being said, we never, ever, ever deny services of any type due to inability to pay. Finances are never a barrier to treatment or services at SYFS. And the sort of same goes through. We do get some money from insurance reimbursements for therapy, but not a ton. You know, co-pay is the same type of thing. Next slide, please. I just figured I'd show you some of our fiscal year 2023 highlights, just because we're coming out with them right now. We provided almost 2,700 hours of counseling, both individual, family, couples, whatever. You know, whoever walks in the door, we will provide the counseling for them. We provided, we received 251 referrals for either counseling or our community support services. That's quite a few. About 900 hours were spent in Allison's program, providing school-based services, counseling, wraparound support, vaping treatment, all types of programming in her school-based services program. We helped 42 residents apply for fuel assistance last year. And we also have a federal grant right now to provide mental health first aid training all across the Commonwealth. And we provided training to 840 adults last year. Quite a few. So next slide, please. In terms of our staff, you've met Allison, myself, and Lynn. In addition to us, we have a project director of our mental health awareness training. That's the mental health first aid training that I just met, just mentioned. So that's a federal grant. That's an ongoing project director position. I don't think it's going away after the federal money goes away. We'll always find funding for that. We've been running that mental health first aid program for, what, like eight years, nine years? Yeah, for quite some time. So that's not going anywhere. We'll always find funding for that. We have three town clinicians. Again, I think that's sort of the, hopefully the work that you guys are most interested in hearing about. Allison's program has two school-based clinicians right now. We also have three fee-for-service clinicians, an office manager. And the reason that we are able to do all the work that we do is because we also have eight interns. We have anywhere between eight to 10. We have anywhere between eight to 10 interns every year. They provide us with an enormous amount of ability to do a lot of work at no cost to us, other than Allison and my time providing supervision and oversight. So it's a really nice model that we have going on. Next slide, please. In terms of our overall client philosophy, we come from a very strengths-based and trauma-informed approach. Allison and I are both social workers by training. You hear about trauma-informed and strengths-based all the time in social work. We live it every single day. I think the value that we place on the story is that the clients come with, every single day, every human being who walks into our office has a story, and we want to hear that story, we want to learn what makes that client tick, what makes that family succeed, and we want to play that up while being aware of the fact that, again, people do have baggage that they may or may not want to share with us at any one time. And everyone in the office is trained on how to work in a trauma-informed manner, not just the clinicians. Lynn, who is our, again, she's our Director of Business Operations, Lynn has done fuel assistance applications, she's taken referrals, and to be able to do that successfully, she needs to be trauma-informed in her approach as well. So we are very, very dedicated to that, we take it really seriously. Again, Allison and I both have a longstanding history of working from sort of a family-centered approach, it's how we both grew up as clinicians, doing family work, and we instill that in our staff and our interns that we have on a day-to-day basis, nobody sort of comes in as an individual without us thinking about them as a member of a family. Again, throughout all of our work, we're focusing not on telling what the client to do, but on trying to help them build their skills, identify their strengths, use their strength, use their skills, so they can be successful moving forward and that they won't need us anymore, we don't want them to be in need of our services. Another big piece of how we operate, we really use a team approach in everything that we do. We're very lucky, we have an incredibly competent group of people who work at Shrewsbury Youth and Family Services, and we rely so closely on one another to be able to do the job that we do. Again, given the size of the agency, we're a very small group, and we do an awful lot of work, and I think the reason that we're able to be so successful is because we're able to work collaboratively as a team. Next slide. In terms of the scope of the services, we have our clinic services, again, I think that's why you guys are all in the room, most of it is pretty straightforward, it's your standard outpatient clinic, we provide assessments, we do treatment planning, we provide counseling, and we do discharge planning, that's, you're going to find that anywhere, at least I hope you're going to find that anywhere. One of the things that makes us very, very unique, and one of the many things that doesn't, but I think for our clinic that makes us so unique is, we have what's called a waitlist crisis support program. One of the things that I love about working at SYFS is we are small enough that we can be very nimble and respond to the needs of the community as they come up. I'm sure you guys are aware, since COVID, we have had a dramatic increase in the number of people who are requesting mental health services, this is not a Shrewsbury-specific situation, this is really going on nationally and certainly throughout Massachusetts. We've also seen a dramatic increase in the acuity of the folks who are coming through our door, we were actually talking about that at about four o'clock this afternoon. So one of the things that we were able to do in response to this is, and we were having waitlists of, despite the fact that we had, you know, eight interns and multiple staff working, waitlists of like, that are like a year long. When you get a call from a parent saying, "My child is refusing to go to school, my child is self-injuring, my child is experiencing suicidal ideation," to tell a parent, "You have to wait a year," is not an acceptable thing to do. And we were doing it, and many, many agencies across the state are doing that. But what we were able to do, again, because of the funding sources that we have from the town, where we don't have to be focused on insurance, and because, again, the size of our agency, we can be creative and develop programs quickly, we came up with our waitlist crisis support program. So that is a program that is designed for individuals who are really having some very significant issues, who are on our waitlist. So these are folks, again, who might be self-harming, who are having behavioral problems that are severely impacting their daily functioning, like, again, like school refusal is one we see quite a bit. Maybe someone just experienced a trauma, maybe someone is struggling with very significant substance use but can't get into a detox or something like that. We have, again, our waitlist crisis support program, it's six sessions of skill-building in crisis planning and stabilization, safety planning. We get folks in within a couple of days of them placing a referral, if they're in that type of situation, they don't do referrals, it's not, it's not, we don't do full assessments, we're not diagnosing, it's just skill-building and safety planning, but this has been a tremendously successful program. We've also partnered, I mentioned, we got a referral today from the Police Department, we've partnered with the Police Department's Co-Response Clinician, because Shrewsbury has one as well, my understanding, you mentioned it, Westboro does. Anytime we get a call from the Shrewsbury Co-Response Clinician, we just take a referral and we make sure that within 48 hours, we go see that person that was referred. So it's a really nice partnership, it's something that we're very, very proud of at SYFS, is that Waitlist Crisis Support Program. So one of the other things that we do in our clinic, we provide significant community support services to the residents of Shrewsbury, we provide case management services, and that might look like anything from helping someone with a housing application to food stamp applications, connecting folks to other needed services like health insurance application folks, you know, whoever it might be. But the primary thing that we do in terms of our case management is our fuel assistance applications. So the agency that sort of looks at all or, you know, examines all of the fuel assistance applications in Shrewsbury is SMOC, I assume that's the same for you guys? So we're very well-versed, we are an application site, I believe, right now in Shrewsbury, it's both the Council on Aging and SYFS that is responsible for that. I think in Westboro right now, my understanding is it's just the COA?
That's correct, yeah.
But that is something that we do, we're very well-versed in it, and we do quite a bit of it, especially right now. Now, we've, my goodness, we've had probably close to 20 already, and this is very early for that many. So Allison, as I mentioned before, runs our School Based Services Program, that is not really related to the services that are potentially going to be contracted with us, but I will tell you about them very quickly. Again, the idea is to eliminate barriers to getting efficient and effective treatment. So it can look like anything like temporary school-based counseling for students that are identified by a school district, to wraparound services for that student's family, maybe the student, the student's family has some acute needs that are sort of too much to be met by a school counselor or something like that, so that's where we step in. We also have a whole menu of services that include everything from workshops to social, emotional learning groups to vaping treatment, that's another one of those, like, we just found that there was a need, so we created a program for vaping treatment. So that's all through Allison's School Based Services Program. Again, sort of back to the work that SYFS does that, you know, might potentially be part of the contract, we do a lot of positive youth development programs, particularly during the summer months and during school vacation weeks, they're not technically camps, but they sort of run like camp-ish programs. So we have a Harry Potter Mental Health Camp where kids get to learn about mental health, you know, through Harry Potter, it's really, really fun, that was something that one of our clinicians developed. We also have a program called Leadership Camp, it's kind of a goofy name, but it's a great program, it's a, it's a girls' empowerment program for middle school girls, and we have been running that for years and years and years, and that's been a very successful program. We also have a whole host of psychoeducational groups that we've run and support groups, so we've done everything from social, emotional learning groups for third and fourth graders, to the sixth graders, art therapy groups, we do a social connectedness group for, at the, one of the Shrewsbury Elder Housing residences, we've done that for, I think, well over a decade, that's a great group. We just got funded to start a new screen time reduction education program, so that's going to be a psychoeducational group with a parent support component to it. So we really, again, if there's a need in the community, we try and develop programming to meet that need. Next slide, please. We also, at least within Shrewsbury right now, some of our interns are placed in the Shrewsbury, this is not through Allison's program, but just through sort of our partnership with the Shrewsbury Public Schools, we have interns who are placed in some of their schools to provide some additional school adjustment counseling to the school district free of charge, and then our students, our interns are able to sort of learn a little bit about what it's like to work in a school. So that's, that's a nice sort of other little feature that we, we have the capacity to do specifically because of our interns, and I think it improves our relationship with the Shrewsbury Public Schools. And then finally, we have a pretty robust training prevention education program, that's primarily going to be our mental health first aid program, but we also offer some healthy relationship and interpersonal violence education programming through a One Love program, and that's, both the Mental Health First Aid and One Love are going to be free of charge for anyone at this point, because we have funding for all of that. Next slide. As I mentioned before, finances are never, ever, ever going to be a barrier to someone receiving services at SYFS. For anyone that is seen by one of our town clinicians, we will not bill insurance, we will not charge a client fee, we will not charge co-pay, they just come in, it's completely free of charge from, for any resident. There's been a wonderful, wonderful partnership with the town and us, it allows us to see folks who have like funky insurances that no one around here accepts, it allows us to see people who don't have insurances at all. It allows us to hire our interns who we know are really skilled clinicians but can't necessarily bill private insurances yet. It's just been a wonderful partnership, and I think it really does allow us to see just about anyone who walks in the door. For clients who are seen by interns, we do charge a client fee, it's nominal, it's like 20 bucks a session, but if a family for whatever reason or individual finds that that's too much, we just waive the fee. That happens on a very regular basis, we really are very serious about ensuring that anyone that needs services can get access to services. We never charge client fee for folks that have mass health, even if they're being seen by an intern, and then most of the payments that we do receive are made through our electronic health record therapy notes, that's not particularly interesting to you, but it is, it is what it is. Next slide? I think that's it? So what questions can we answer for you? I realize that was a lot of information in a very short period of time.
So just to back up, so Shrewsbury, I say this every time I say it, Shrewsbury Youth and Family Services is not a Department of Shrewsbury, it is a, it is a separate nonprofit, which is why some of the funding sources that Jen just described to you, they're able to access. Also, just wanting to just give more history to our discussions, starting in the summer, we did reach out to Shrewsbury Youth and Family Services, understanding that Shrewsbury carried a different model, because as a result of us having such a difficult time bringing folks into our vacant positions, which is the Director position in Westboro Youth and Family Services, as well as a counselor position. And so we reached out to them, and we've had a lot of good discussions in person, over the phone, really introducing some of our stakeholders to Shrewsbury Youth and Family Services, so inclusive of our Police Chief has met with them, or Superintendent of Schools, several of you have met with them in different meetings, and so, and then we've met with our Youth Commission, as well as our current Westboro Youth and Family Services staff that has started to meet with them, so that they can really connect on how this might work going forward. So I know we've talked about it, we've talked about it a lot, we've talked about it in public meetings more recently, still trying to work through exactly what this model will look like because it is new, but this is a really great opportunity for you to ask questions of SYFS and for yourselves and for the community to hear.
Yeah, so a couple of questions for the SYFS team, whoever wants to take them. So you talk a little bit about, if you could go back to the slides, Cela, on where they talked about fees and, so, yeah, so explain to me the, and I understand this is your current model, whether Westboro would align with that or not, I know is to be determined, but this is your model. Explain to me the intern fee charge, if you're seeing an intern, you're paying $20 if they have commercial insurance.
Yeah, so if a client has, let's say, Tufts or Harvard Pilgrim or something, for every session, we would charge what's called a client fee, we are not billing insurance, so this is not a co-pay, but essentially functions as a small co-pay, so we're able to get some reimbursement for the services that are provided to the client. Again, we will never charge that client fee if a client has mass health, and if, for whatever reason, that client fee is any type of financial hardship, we simply waive it.
Okay, and, and I, I think I'm honing in, so I appreciate that explanation, I think I'm honing in by, if, if clients are seen by interns, what if someone is seen by one of your clinicians, are they also charged the $20?
No.
And why the difference?
So the, if there's, well, let me back up, if they're seen by one of my town clinicians, there is no fee because we are already funded for that service.
Okay.
From the town of Shrewsbury. If they're seen by one of our fee-for-service clinicians, we will bill insurance and we will charge a co-pay.
Okay, thank you.
Or Allison's.
Or Allison.
Or Allison, yes, Allison is the sort of wild card in there.
She's like the hybrid, right, okay, okay. And.
Can I just, so in talking to, in trying to create the scope of work, currently we have two part-time positions, two, two part-time counselors, and then we have the full-time director. So we've talked about the potential need for two full-time positions, so the idea being that, that in looking at our current caseload, they would easily be able to be seen by two full-time clinicians, if that makes sense.
Yeah, Kristi, can you just say, just, so currently two part-time, one director, one administrator?
So, so currently we have one director, which is full-time, and then two part-time counselors.
And an administrator.
Right, but they don't see clients, so I'm talking about the client caseload.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
And how that would work with clinicians.
Okay, and so the new model you're suggesting, what, again?
I'm just saying that the number of hours that we staff for counselors is less than what we are talking about for town-funded clinicians, which do not charge for service.
Understood, okay, thank you. And if, Cela, if you could go back to the slide on highlights, FY23 highlights, and Jen, if you don't have this information, certainly don't feel compelled to answer it, I'm curious if you go back to the FY23, yep, there you go, that's okay. So of the 251 referrals, do you have a sense by percent or by number, since you're servicing, you have multiple programs in school and town, what percent of those or number are for the town or Shrewsbury today?
I can, so of the 251, those are going to be referrals either from the town of Shrewsbury for outpatient counseling or the, for fuel assistance applications, those are really exclusively going to be Shrewsbury.
Okay.
So I would say that's, actually, I could do the math right now, I'm going to have Lynn do the math right now.
We did it.
Yeah, it was a 99, it was like 99% was Shrewsbury residents.
Okay.
Yeah.
And then, and then, so going up to the top for the, for the hours of individual and family counseling?
Same.
Same?
It's, it's.
So those 903 hours really are separate and kind of under Allison's?
Correct, they're not part of the clinic, they're, they're part of the School Based Services Program.
Okay. And do you have a sense in that 2688, how many individuals or family units?
Unique clients we're seeing? It's, I'm gonna, I can sort of ballpark it for you, it's probably around 175.
Okay. Okay, and Kristi, it, just so I understand kind of scope of discussion tonight, are, do you envision we're going to have a further discussion on kind of, kind of how operationally this would work, or after we get through questions, or how do you want to handle that?
Yeah, because we need to finalize the documents between, between us and then bring them back to you, so I don't think that that's for tonight, it was really just to introduce you to the SYFS.
Okay, that's fine, I just wanted to start asking a million questions about that. Okay, thanks.
All for now.
Shelby?
Sorry, I do think, though, that generally we should say that all of the Shrewsbury Youth and Family Services, the folks who would be employed by Westboro, as well as, well, they would be fully located in the town of Westboro, and that Jen has said as the, as the Director, that she would be spending time in offices in Westboro as well, so.
Yeah, probably about 20 hours a week if this were to move forward, at least for quite some time.
And you mentioned this, I think, in the beginning, Kristi, that we would still have a Westboro employee focusing on, again, scope and all that has been defined.
Community resource and outreach, yeah.
Right, right, okay, complementing the work that's being done.
Right.
Okay. All for now, I've reserved the right to come back.
You're yielding your time.
I yielded the time to Mr. Edmard, no, I don't, whoever.
First of all, thanks for being here and, you know, I haven't dealt with you directly, but have heard great things through many people there, so I think this is, as I said before, kind of really smart idea for us as a town to consider as an option, because it has been a struggle for us and we have people in need here. I guess my question revolves around, and you hit it a couple of times here, is kind of thinking of the scope of services we're doing. and you hit it a couple of times here, is kind of thinking of the scope of services we're doing. You went through a lot of things here. I think what we're talking is really that, um, clinician, the piece. But with that, uh, what other pieces here kind of come with that or is it straight clinician work that you guys do today? I know schools are separate, um, but.
Yeah. So certainly the, um, just the regular therapy, that would obviously come under that. I think the waitlist crisis support, we would want to replicate in any kind of program moving forward. Any of the groups that we run, the social, emotional learning type groups, the, um, screen time reduction program. I'm hoping that goes well because I've spent a lot of time developing that. Our, uh, groups that we do, uh, at our, uh, you know, public senior housing. Like those are all services that would easily be replicated as part of a contract between SYFS and, um, the town of Westboro. And in terms of the public, the public education programs, so like the mental health first aid or the, um, One Love programs, that stuff that we do across the Commonwealth. So that would, regardless of what happens here, we're, we're always available for that.
Great. Um, and so it may be the, and you may have said, and I apologize to, but the one that intrigued me was some of the work you've done on the kind of youth, the non-camp camp type stuff.
Oh, yeah. The, the, the non-camp camps.
Yes.
Yeah. I know that we can't call them camps, so I'm trying not to, but I'm going to call them camps.
But I know, I mean, I know in town, um, from a prior director, we ran a program called Hot Summer Nights during the summer, which was really different things around that that stopped, um, I think for a variety of reasons. But I guess to that, some of that stuff, that is included or would be something that we would have to put into a contract if we wanted to?
I would imagine that we could find a way to include that. I think it would, I think we would just have to get creative on how we staff it. Um,
Typically run by interns?
Yeah, that's right. It is typically run by interns. So as long as we, we'll find interns.
Okay.
I never have a problem.
And not say it's the same thing. I think we went through it and it, it stopped, you know, a number of years ago. Whether it's needed in that form or not, it was just more something that intrigued me because I know that it was something that was a part of our youth and family services programming for, for a number of years.
Yeah. Something that we can always do is, you know, we can hold the programming here in Westboro and have both Shrewsbury and Westboro residents attend. Or we can have it, like, we can, we can sort of go back and forth, like depending on, you know, if we're like short-staffed or whatever reason. We can, we can always find a way to get creative.
So just sort of generally, the current draft scope includes the counseling services, the group work, um, workshops and trainings, uh, working with law enforcement and the school, even though we're not looking at a full, uh, school-based services contract, that there would obviously be partnership with the school in some ways. Uh, community support services, and then, uh, we included the waitlist crisis support. And then one thing that would be unique in Westboro is, um, that working with our youth commission. So Shrewsbury, the town of Shrewsbury does not have a youth commission, but, um, the way that we've started to talk about it is the youth commission would serve in an advisory capacity, um, for this contract.
Perfect. Thank you.
So a couple of quick questions. The waitlist crisis support.
Mm-hmm.
Is that for individuals on your waitlist?
Yes.
Could it also be open to people on waitlists or multiple waitlists? Right, right, right now, checking with some of the counseling groups in Westboro privately run, access to an adolescent therapist is, the waitlists are running four to six months.
Oh, I know. That's, that's short, actually.
And so, um, and, and the challenge for families with adolescents on that waitlist is if a crisis avows, and the only alternative is the emergency room, from the time you walk in to the emergency room to the time you get a bed could be 13 days, sitting in the ER.
And you might not even.
You might never get one.
Might never get a bed. I mean.
Yeah. And so.
So that's.
It seems like a, an amazing service that's needed.
So I would bef, can I give a terrible answer and say, I don't know? I don't know. Like it's, it's not something I would automatically say no to, but we are, if, if this were to sort of work the way it works in Shrewsbury, we really don't have time to be able, we don't have, we just don't have the capacity to do that. Um, one of the things that I am aware of is the fact that if people are coming to us in crisis, usually the needs are very significant. So these are not cases that I would give to interns. These are only cases that I would give to master's level clinicians. Our fee-for-service clinicians would not be available to do it because insurance does not reimburse for this. Um, so that's only something that we can do through our town clinicians. So we're talking about a very small number of people who are really even able to provide the service. So I realize that's not a real satisfactory answer.
No, no, no. It's a great answer because it's a realistic assessment of the situation, what you can and can't do.
But it, but it's also something I would never just say no to something until we try.
Something that we could explore, but has some pretty signi, you know, nothing's simple, right? It's some pretty complex challenges.
I think the other thing that's important to highlight about that program is the fact that it, it is not necessarily a replacement for the ER. So if we ever assess a child that's truly in crisis, we will tell them that the program is not appropriate without getting evaluated first, at least.
Okay.
Yeah. So they may still end up at the ER no matter what. That's a good point, Allison.
And I know that, and this is also for the public knowledge, you might be watching, for Westboro advocates can do those assessments and they're connected to a whole set of programs that you wouldn't necessarily get connected to if you do go to the ER. Right? There's different referral networks and systems.
Yeah. And certainly our waitlist crisis support does not have those connections with the programs that advocates does. Like you would have to go through advocates to get access to those.
Yeah. Those require the whole, full.
Yeah. The whole process.
Crisis evaluation. Okay. And then my second question is with, with your clinic model and the number of interns. I mean, one of the challenges we faced is not just finding a director, but finding clinicians to work in the environment. There is a shortage of mental health professionals available. Does, maybe I'm asking a question where you get to brag a little bit, but the clinic model you have with the constant influx of interns, does that enable you to fill positions you feel will make it easy for you to be able to make sure that our positions are filled?
150%. All three of our town clinicians, all two of our school-based clinicians and two of our three fee-for-service clinicians, were all interns here at one point. And one of the things that's so fantastic about this intern model is that when we do expand and when we do up positions, what we do is we reach out to the interns who are most clinically savvy, most skilled, best fit our culture. We already know this is going to be a, a knock out of the park hire. So I think when I talked earlier about that team approach, because we know our staff so well, we're able to continue to maintain that really high caliber sort of employee that we, that we seek. And I think because we're sort of a, when you work in an environment where everyone is very competent, it's a nice place to work. Again, yeah, I think it is like pat on the back a little bit and, you know, I, I do like to brag about where I work because it's a, it's a wonderful place. Um, but I think that model is one of the major reasons for it.
We even snapped one of the interns as my administrative assistant. So, like, we're pulling him from everywhere, you know, um, promoting from within works. It really does.
And I would say we have a really impressive retention rate compared to other agencies. So like most community-based agencies average around two years for a clinician that's just coming out of, um, on, um, their master's program. And we average at least five.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
We're a nice place to work.
Thank you very much. And thank you for coming here tonight to introduce yourselves to the town and everything. Uh, Christie mentioned the youth commission earlier, and that's sort of different than what you have in Shrewsbury. How do you see yourself interacting with the youth commission and, and I guess how much you know about it?
So I know a bit about it just from meetings with Christine and Kim. Um, and I feel like it's a wonderful model. I love this model. Um, and I think when we were sort of initially talking about this, it made sense for me to be the person who would sort of be attending any kind of youth commission meeting where adults are invited. I, with, the way, the way that SYFS works right now is we have youth board members. I like this model better. Um, I feel like it allows more youth to have a voice in what's going on. It allows me as the clinic director, I never go to board meetings, but I'm also the one that's developing a lot of the programming. It allows me to really get a better sense of what's going on for the young people of Westboro and to try and design programs to meet those needs, not the needs that I think might be happening or the needs that like the superintendent tells me might be happening. These are neat, not that those are unimportant voices, but you know, this is Westboro Youth and Family Services. I want to hear from the youth what's needed. So I actually think this is a fantastic model.
Thank you. Thank you. Any other questions? No. This has been terrific. Thank you very much for coming this evening.
Absolutely. And if anyone, I don't know if this is allowed, um, but if anyone ever has questions for any one of us, please don't hesitate to reach out. Um, we're pretty approachable and, you know, we like to talk about ourselves and our agency.
Just a question then for Christie. What is the sort of?
I was just gonna say.
Okay. There you go.
Um, so in terms of next steps, um, we're continuing to work on, uh, the, the scope of services to get that fully refined. Um, and then, uh, they've asked some questions of us that we owe them responses to in order to, to create an estimate, uh, for the cost of this contract. Um, and then we've also talked about the need for a memorandum of understanding related to how this contract will interact with the employee, um, specifically related to sort of confidentiality and how that, um, information will, will go back and forth. So, um, so there's a few documents that we have left and then of course we would need to, in order to fund the contract before town meeting, we would need to go through the ARBA process. So.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you very much.
Nice to meet y'all. See you all.
Almost finished my holiday show.
So what you got?
Did Sean find you or is he wandering around?
Do you want me to give my report while Sean's gone?
Sure. We can ask the vice chair to continue the meeting. Patrick?
Would you like the town manager's report?
Wake up, Patrick. Sure. Town manager report. Go ahead.
Okay. Um, um, so we have put out an ad for the golf club building committee. Um, so letters of interest for appointment for the three at-large members are due in the town manager's office, um, on December 4th. The town website upgrade went live on Thursday, November 16th. Uh, so far we've received a lot of really good positive feedback about the website. Um, we appreciate everyone's patience as they're getting oriented with the new site, but I think overall people are really excited about it. And, and department heads are too. I mean, if you start looking on there, you can see, um, you heard tonight about the dog park. There's a great flyer on Jen's page. She's putting it on town news. So it's really, I think, already being really well-used. The budget summit, uh, will be, is scheduled for Thursday, January 25th. That's what we, when we've been doing that is an all-day meeting with the finance committee. Um, and it's always, it's been the last Thursday in January. Um, and that'll be in the great hall. The MBTA zoning, so the director of planning will host an informational session related to the proposed MBTA communities regulations and the town's proposal on December 5th at 7:00 PM. So we actually are also meeting on that evening. But I believe it's going to be recorded. Um, and you know, certainly we are, I've already talked to Jenny about coming to a future meeting to talk to the board. So, um, but that meeting will be hybrid. So folks can participate from home or in person. Uh, the treasure collector, our treasure collector will be leaving her position on December 15th. So this position is currently being advertised and we're also working on contracting interim treasure collector services, which we're hoping to bring before the board on December 5th, um, for your concurrence. Um, and then on, and then we're working on the FY25 budget. So we met with all the department heads regarding their budget requests and are currently working on the full document. And then the capital expenditure committee is also wrapping up its work. For department head updates and library, uh, Bonnie Cochran and Julian Lloyd performed at the Forbes Municipal Building for a crowd of about 70 people. Concert was funded in part by the cultural council and audience members loved the setting and experience. Children ages three to six have been participating in STEM beginnings, which is a weekly class that's offered through a partnership with the YMCA Family and Community Partnership. Um, the library recently hosted a new adults event called Adequate Arts Crafting for the Rest of Us. I probably should have gone to that. The, the class was, uh, full to capacity with a waiting list. So the library provided craft materials and mocktails and participants made unfinished carved wooden signs or light with an inspiring message. All attendees enjoyed a fun and relaxing class and the library will look to host similar events soon. Uh, the recreation department wants to thank everyone for the successful winter stroll that was held on Sunday. Um, they're also acknowledging the retirement of veteran employee Earl Story. Um, and then moving forward, the golf course will be open on a day-to-day basis based on weather conditions. So please call the pro shop for course availability. Memberships for next season are also now available for purchase. More information on memberships can be found in the town website. Uh, and the town clerk's office is currently certifying initiative petition papers, which are due into the secretary of the Commonwealth by December 6th. Resident voters should expect to see a postcard from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts in early January regarding early vote by mail for all elections in 2024. Online, online dog licensing for 2023 is closed. So residents who desire a license should stop by the town clerk's office or wait until January 1st, which is the first day of the next licensing year. And then in youth and family services, the free holiday store is being set up in the meeting room of the library and applications for families in need are available there as well. Donations for the free holiday store can be dropped off at the library. That's it.
Thank you very much. Um, I believe next we have requests for appointments, uh, the select board representative to the golf building committee.
So, uh, the golf building committee is, um, is going to have a representative from a few different committees. One of them is the select board. So if any of you are interested, um, you can appoint someone tonight.
Can I just ask a question before we talk about the board? So Christie, I know that we had received, um, uh, at least one question from a resident about the composition and, um, the ability to create a golf building committee versus utilizing the, um, NBC municipal building committee. So, um, do we have any guidance on that? I just want to make sure that how we're proceeding, we're okay to proceed.
Uh, no, I understand. Um, I haven't gone back to that email, but, um, the municipal, I, I did put in the board's pocket what the, what the town, town meeting vote was for the municipal building committee, which was clear that it was, um, it's for the construction of a new building. Um, and that the town manager may create, may use that municipal building committee for the reconstruction. So that's a may.
May. Yeah.
The, the idea of creating a new committee, I actually spoke to the municipal building committee chair about that. Um, and we talked about the need for some, um, specific expertise on this committee, which we would hope to get, uh, through this process. Additionally, um, we'll also be working on the setup of the community center, which I would expect the municipal building committee would be working on. So.
Okay. Thank you. Thanks for just, I know we talked about that when you originally, um, when we talked about the building committee, but I thought it was, um, important, um, because there had been some questions about that in circling in the public. So, thank you, Sean.
Thank you, Shelby. Thank you. So at this point, I don't know if we, um, if anyone is interested in, in the building.
I'm going to make it easy. I'm not.
I, I'm, I'm actually interested. I mean, I, as you know, I was your representative to the building reuse committee. Um, put a lot of time in, um, understand, uh, extensively what came out in surveys, whatever. I, I think, um, had a lot of discussions that went broader, um, even in that committee. Then we had to narrow it back down to what our charge was. I think I remember every committee, we looked back at the charges. Okay. That gets put to the side. That's for the next committee. So personally, I, I am, um, I'm interested, um, in that. I think as folks have heard me say many times, I'm very interested in doing this in a fashion that, um, uh, does not cost taxpayers, um, any money. So that is something that I think I'll bring and continue to pound the table for. I can't guarantee it, but that's, that's really my focus and one that I would bring there because I think that is, I personally think it's something that can be done. I think that would resonate well with the town, still give the town what they want um, in terms of what we heard through the reuse committee, but also do in a way that, um, you know, in essence protect. but also do in a way that, you know, in essence protects taxpayers from tax increases.
That makes a lot of sense. Can I get a motion?
Can I, I would just like to hear, is there interest otherwise? Just Ian's the obvious one, I just, which is great.
I wouldn't step up if Ian didn't step up, so I'm good with that.
You said you weren't interested.
No, I am not.
I'm saying I'm interested in Ian.
Okay, okay. Okay, no, I just wanted, I didn't want to assume before we went to a motion. Thank you.
Thank you for checking.
Yep.
Thank you for checking.
And thank you, Ian, for your continued interest in...
We each do our little pieces.
Yep, no, it's great. My only fully supporting Ian being on there, I think one of the things we talked about was having a golf club, limiting the number of golf club members in the, in general. So you would be sort of both.
I am a golf club member.
So we would have to keep that in mind.
Although I have not renewed for next year.
So I'll be appointing them, and so when we receive them, I understand that the board asks that I do that, keep a balance, but we haven't seen any applications, so we don't know at this point who is going to be reaching out. So I understand the need for that balance, but I just, I guess, want to be clear that we haven't, we're not sure who is going to put their hat forward.
Yeah, I think for full disclosure, so folks know, is I have been a member, I intend to be a member next year. I just haven't paid for next year yet, but I know that I can pay now. But I, for the sake, I will consider to be a member, because I will be.
And I just bring it up because I feel, I felt like the consensus of the board was the composition that we discussed our last meeting, which I don't have right in front of me, I apologize. So if we were to stray from that consensus, understanding that Christie is appointing with our consensus?
No.
No. So if that composition were to be different based on what you're seeing, then I would expect that to come back to the board for discussion. I'm just saying, because that's kind of where we as a board...
So I was asked to give the board a preview into what the intention was, but ultimately, the board doesn't have an appointing role, and I know that it was brought up by one board member. I don't know that everyone said that that's what they wanted, so I, we need to look at who is putting their hat in the ring, and, but we need to also move forward with the development of the committee. We haven't received any names yet, as far as maybe one.
I thought we received one, yeah.
Maybe one.
I guess I would just say, I get where you're coming from, I understand the role the board plays here, but I agree with Shelby in this case, that if there is, Ian is a current member and intends to be a member, that if, in the submissions you receive, I would expect non-members to be preferred because of how you've outlined the composition of that committee. So that would be my expectation.
Yeah, I mean, I think it depends on the candidates you get, right? I think it's more important that we have people who can add their life skills to the committee, and then I would think of that as a secondary consideration important. But, yeah, I guess it depends on what the pool is we're working from.
And I actually completely agree with that, Sean, and I would not, I mean, I think we've accepted the report from the building reuse committee, which was very clear about that the use is pro shop like it's been today, but really, it's about building a community restaurant in that space. So personally speaking, even as a golf club member, I'm going in there with, yes, the golf club use, which we had discussions with the golf pro being part of that. But I think we know what's necessary. I think that will get incorporated, but the bigger scope of this committee and why I think it's structured in terms of the preferences that were put in the, what we're looking for is folks that have experience with restaurants. I don't remember the whole, but I think that's going to come out. If, you know, it so happens that the best person there happens to be a golf member, we don't have a choice. I don't, I wouldn't want to exclude somebody, but I do think, I mean, I trust Christie, I mean, I think she understands what we're looking for, understands the report, and has the appointing authority there, but my view is, you know, we know what the charge is. It's about building a restaurant.
Yeah, I don't want to imply that I don't trust Christie.
I'm not saying...
And again, I just want to maybe get a little more clear. I think, and I can't speak for Shelby here, but in my opinion, if all things being equal between two candidates, having a golf member already on there and yourself, I would like, again, two equal candidates, the non-golf member, I believe, should get a plus one, because we need that representation. Again, understanding that the report has come out, and all that work's been done, and it's the framework by which the committee is going to operate. I'm just, I think it's really important that we keep that context in this moving forward, like we did originally.
Yeah, yeah, I think, thank you, Patrick. You echoed my thoughts exactly. And I think that the expertise that we've talked about around restaurant experiences, you know, construction, those to me are very unique, and I don't want to say anyone can play golf, but, you know.
I can.
Ian, you can, no, just kidding. No, no, I think that's an important voice. That's an important voice for obvious reasons. I just want it to have balance. This is a community asset that happens to be at the golf course on that property that will also service golf club operations, and we just need to keep that in mind to construct in the formation of the committee, and I also trust Christie. But I think it's important that she hears that, you know, hears what the board's expectation is so that she can view those applications and, you know, proceed with confidence and support of the board, that's all.
Thank you. Oh, wait, so we haven't put forward a motion yet, have we?
I move we appoint Ian Johnson as the select board's representative to the golf building committee.
All those in favor? Five to zero, five being present. Okay, Ian, thank you for taking that on.
Thank you, Ian.
Thank you.
We have another request for appointment, Greg Giraud to the zoning board of appeals.
I move to appoint Greg Giraud to the zoning board of appeals as an alternate member for a term to expire June 30th, 2025.
Seconded? Seconded. Thank you. All those in favor?
I'm sorry, just, yeah, so I just, I know what the ZBA does. I don't, I truly don't have the totality of all the things that they cover. Given his professional affiliation, is there, being an electrical contractor, is there any potential conflict of interest that would be routine, not needing to, you know, recuse himself regularly? I guess that's what it was. So someone that maybe has more experience, Christie, someone else here?
I don't believe it should in that role. I mean, it's really about zoning.
Yep.
And appeals of zoning rules, which electrical is more code.
Yeah, okay.
So I don't, I don't...
If he was a developer who's active in Westboro, then you know, reason to pause, because...
It's not permitting it zoning.
Yeah.
It's zoning not permitting.
Okay, thank you. I just want to make sure I was...
That's a good question.
Thank you.
And having people with...
That might not be a good question, but thank you.
I didn't think about it, but it's a good...
Yeah, okay.
But I think having people with construction experience or of understanding what folks are trying to do with their homes and their motivation, I think is good, so.
Thought his letter was well-written.
Yep.
Okay, so we had...
We want to thank him for volunteering to step forward.
Yes.
Yeah.
Absolutely. Get a motion.
We had a motion and a second, so all those in favor, five to zero, five being present. Okay, minutes of November 14th and November 16th.
I move the approval of the meeting minutes of November 14th, 2023, and November 16th, 2023.
Second.
Thank you very much. All those in favor, five to zero. Town manager's report. We are now up to issues and correspondence. Do I have a volunteer?
Sure, I'll start things off. Just two things I'll say. First of all, I'd like to thank Shelby and all the people who worked on the winter events this past weekend. Fantastic event, enjoyed by all. The weather was fantastic, really a great environment, and really enjoyed it. And then, secondly, I would just like to say, just to add into Christie's comments in regards to the youth and family services holiday store, we moved over four truckloads of boxes from the...
Sure, sure.
Just forgot the name of the one.
Forbes?
Not Forbes, the Harvey Building.
Harvey Building.
Harvey Building, they should know that, geez. Harvey Building, over to, over to the library. I'd like to thank Kate Storm for also pitching in and helping with that. That was about half the boxes, so there's still a lot more that they're working on. And there were a number of volunteers that came over today and helped set up the store. It looks fantastic. If you happen to have an opportunity, come on down and look at it, and certainly, they're looking for donations as well, so, thank you.
Sure, I'll jump in, and while I appreciate the thanks, the winter light celebration was really a multifaceted, multi-department, layered effort. I want to thank all the departments. Certainly, recreation, DPW played a huge role leading up to the event, including, you know, hanging of the banners and coordination on all the electrical aspects, fire, police, Brett Bordland, Steve Masserelli with all the technology, the Westboro High School choir, the family, Navi, Nevi and her family with DJing the music, Boy Scout Pack 33 handing out candy canes, all the businesses and families that donated banners, donated contributions to have the banners, which ultimately, you know, contribute directly to the professional hanging of all the lights. And the individual donors, I want to thank them. The parade was great, lots of creativity there. By the way, I'm sure someone else will cover it, but yay, Westboro High School girls volleyball, repeat champs. Great to see them on a float, and of course, Santa showing up. It's amazing how he finds Westboro every year on the Sunday after Thanksgiving to be there. But the Westboro Rotary Club, I'm certainly a proud member of that, and really honored to be able to continue to have the town's support to work collaboratively to bring this event forward. So thanks to all who showed up and who continue to support it, and seems to get bigger. And, you know, I didn't thank the economic development committee, sorry about that, for the winter stroll beforehand, and it was great to drive downtown, sort of as we were getting ready for the, on the Rotary Celebration, to see all the people out. I saw people at the church, I saw people in businesses, and there were cars parked on the streets. So it was very, it was very active, so thanks to all involved, and I'll stop there. Thank you.
Just real quick, and Christie had mentioned earlier, but as your representative, capital expenditures planning committee, we've met twice already, and we've met with all the various departments over the last two Mondays, I believe. Kim's shaking her head, too many meetings. And we're in the process right now of doing the evaluation, independent evaluations, and we'll be meeting and continue those meetings going forward. But this is our crunch time of going through it. Appreciate all the work the departments have done. Kim leading the charge on that, but good committee, and we will have that capital expenditures plan over the next few weeks. The second thing, I don't know if it's issues and correspondence, but just, I didn't notice tonight coming through that the signboard is just off the rotary, talking about the bridge height, which I think is great. I don't know if there was something specific regarding why it's there now, or if it's a start. I know we've talked about having a discussion here, but I think anything's great to try to stop trucks hitting that bridge.
Someone had noticed that it was being painted in the yellow sign on the bridge, at least on the eastbound side was down, so I don't know if that was that big yellow sign that you never see and you hit it. So other than taking up a parking spot, I thought it was great there, so.
I like anything that...
Anything that does.
But actually, that makes sense now of why, but, yeah, I just want anything that can stop trucks hitting that bridge. That's all I had.
Continuation of the winter lights display.
Yeah.
Okay, a couple of updates from committees. If you're on Facebook, you've probably seen the posts, the spirit committee is organizing the holiday light tour again this year in Westboro. So if you are decorating your home for the holidays, the outside of your home, we're not saying we're going to invite people in, that's the house tour that's also open for ticket sales, which is a good thing. But the spirit committee, if you're proud of your holiday decorations, you can register your home, and they will add it to the list, and they come up with a route map that gets people efficiently through town to do a holiday light and decoration tour. And then with the Westboro Affordable Housing Trust, as the board will call it, the board delegated the town's right to, option to purchase an affordable home at Seven Lawton's Way. If the state executive office of housing living quarters was unable to find an eligible buyer within the 90 days, the housing trust did vote to take that action. We've since been notified, even though the 90 days isn't up, the program that made that unit affordable under that program, the calculation for what the sale price will be, is by definition unaffordable to anyone who would meet the criteria to buy it.
Can you say that again?
So the selling, the, so that Seven Lawton's Way was made affordable under a program called Housing Opportunities Program, which rather than using an income-based formula, uses a percentage of market value, of appraised market value. The market value of the home, and you take the percentage, puts a maximum selling price that is about $180,000 more than if it went through the current needs-based formula that's used, that's been used for affordable housing for the last 20 years. And so thereby, anyone who met the income and asset qualifications would not be able to afford a mortgage, even through the mass housing, MHP discount, and subsidized mortgage programs. It's an impossible situation. Given that, the housing trust is currently taking the steps necessary to do one of two things. We can, as voted, we can execute, purchase the property, turn it around, convert it to the current affordability formulas and deed riders and sell it, which in effect is a subsidy. We're talking with the state about how much they'll contribute to that, to that subsidy, to make that effective not only for the current homeowner who's trying to sell, but the person buying and the housing trust from a budgetary standpoint. The other option we have is to buy down the selling price, which is we would simply commit the funds, and then EO HLC would sell the house at, under the current formulas, and we would provide our share of the gap at closing. And so there's, the next step for us is a home inspection, that's underway, getting that scheduled, and we're looking to see what would be best, the best way forward. But we will maintain the home as affordable in a way that is actually affordable to people who would qualify.
And you think that gap is about $180,000?
Yeah.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah.
Alan, thank you very much.
And I want to thank my trustees who keep agreeing to meetings, because we're certainly having more than the one every couple of months, and even the one a month that we have been running to make sure that these, we can move quickly on these things.
That's why we have a trust.
Thank you. Nothing from me. Can I get a motion?
I'll move to enter into executive session under Mass General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A2, to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiation and contract negotiations with non-union personnel, Christie Williams, under Mass General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A3, to discuss strategy with respect to litigation, R.E. Ferris Development Group, LLC, versus Town of Westboro Lax Media LLC and Lax Media Mass LLC, Worcester Superior Court, CA Number 2285 CV01281, if the chair declares that an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the town's litigating position. And under Mass General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A3, to discuss strategy with respect to litigation...
to discuss strategy with respect to litigation, RE Town of Westboro versus Westboro SBE LLC, Land Court Case Number 19TL000768, if the chair declares that an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the town's litigating position. And under Mass General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A3, to discuss strategy with respect to litigation, RE Westboro SBE LLC versus Town of Westboro et al., US District Court Case Number 4:23 CV12017-MRG, if the chair declares that an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the town's litigating position. And under Mass General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A3, to discuss strategy with respect to litigations regarding, in RE Westboro SBE LLC, US Bankruptcy Court Case Number 23-40709, if the chair declares that an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the town's litigating position. And under Mass General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A3, to discuss strategy with respect to litigation, RE Residents of Westboro Station, Northland TPLP LLC at 100 Charlestown Meadow Drive, Worcester Land Court Case Number 22MISC000445-DRR, if the chair declares that an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the town's negotiating position. And under Mass General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A6, to consider the purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real property at 1500 Union Street, if the chair declares that an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the board's negotiating position. And under Mass General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A7, to act under the authority of the select board to approve executive session minutes of November 14th, 2023, and November 16th, 2023.
Second. I declare that an open meeting would have a detrimental effect on the board's negotiating, litigating, and bargaining position. The board will not be reconvening in an open session after executive session. Can I get a second to the motion?
Second. Thank you, Westboro TV.
Oh, yes, thank you very much.
Johnson, yes.
Edinburgh, yes.
Welch, yes.
Marshall, yes.
Keough, yes. Goodbye. Good night. Sorry.
Am I, am I, are we establishing a record for like?